Hi, everyone. We are already in session. We had an executive session before this, so we do not have to come into session. Welcome. Glad to have you this evening. I'll say in advance, happy holidays, happy new year to everyone as well. So we are at item A. We've already done the roll call, but we need the approval of minutes A2 for the regular meeting of October 4th, 2016, and the special meeting of October 15th, 2016. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Beckett. Any questions, comments? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
All right. And then we can move on to item B, awards and recognition.
All righty.
Good evening.
All right. This is the best part of our business meetings, is we recognize our students. So I'd like to begin with our recognitions tonight by honoring several Heights High students and staff who are using their unique talents to make positive change. As I call your name, please come forward to the front and center of the room to receive a certificate. First, Junior Ben Schuster. Ben is a member of the Youth Forum Council at the City Club of Cleveland. On October 24th, he moderated a forum on achievement gap in schools. Ben also identified the panel members for the event, which included notable leaders in education from the greater Cleveland area. He suggested the achievement gap topic to the youth council because he wanted adults and students to learn more about this issue, especially because it is a focus of our district and a primary component of our strategic plan. Additionally, we have several IMSAN students and their advisors who have been working hard to help close the achievement gap at Heights High, specifically in advanced placement courses. Dad's Chesney, please come up. Jalen Coleman. Tessa Green. Josephine Johnson. Hassan Lewis McGee. Michaela Truitt, along with their advisors, Odisha Johnson, Sean Washington, and Nathan Williams. Have you got it? You got it? Majid. Majid, thank you. Majid. Yes. Someone just stand. Okay. The group attended the National IMSAN Minority Student Achievement Network Conference back in October. When they returned, they began implementing plans to increase the number of minority students in AP classes. The students hosted an I Am AP discussion during lunch periods where students interested in learning about AP courses could talk to the IMSAN scholars. In mid-August, several staff hosted an AP boot camp for students enrolled in AP courses. The workshop focused on the organizational and study skills needed to succeed in AP courses. We're so proud to have such a caring, forward-thinking students to help us achieve our goals and work toward eliminating the achievement gap. Let's give them all a round of applause. So next, we have Ina Keys Harris. Ina is a budding filmmaker and was recently part of a five-girl team that produced the movie East Cleveland: A Tale of Two Cities. The goal of the project was to unveil the story of East Cleveland through the eyes of children. For her work, she won a 2016 MyCom Youth Voice Award. Ina, we're proud that you are tapping your creativity into projects that can ultimately help educate the community and offering unique points of view. We can't wait to see what you produce down the road, and let's give her a round of applause for her work. [applause] Okay. Thank you, students, and congratulations again to all of you.
Thank you very much. Boy, the room got larger. We're empty. All right. All right. We're going to move on to public address. We have no requested audience. Do we have any? No one who signed up either? Okay. All right. So that's item C. Moved right through that. So we move on to the superintendent's report. We need approval of the field trips listed there. I need a motion.
Yeah. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? We received an update just a minute ago on this, so be sure you look at what was at your desk. Any questions or comments?
Do you need to make it one through A through G? Or just?
Yeah, A through G.
A through G. I apologize. Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Eric.
Was there any substantial things in the update? I mean...
Well, just had some places that were incorrect. Yes.
All right. All right. Mr. Gainer, the roll.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
All right. Next, we move on to personnel. Can I take them all together?
So moved.
No, no, hold on. I don't know if I can take them all together.
All together.
One through six.
Okay. Yeah, no, I do see that. Okay. So I need a motion for items E1 through 6.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman. And...
Second.
All right. Questions, comments? All right. Mr. Gainer, the roll, please.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
All right. And now I need most of for item E7, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any question, comments? Okay, Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we're blown through this, don't we? All right. We're going to change the order of the business section just a little bit, so we're going to start with item F5 and 6. So let's start with item F5, which is I need a motion to recommendation to approve the lease agreement between the Board of Education of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District and Coventry Village Children's Center.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Peck, do you want to...
This is prior discussion at the last board meeting. Six-month lease, actually seven months, the month of December through June for Coventry Village Daycare. It brings them up to current lease standards with the rest of the group. And they are going to adhere to the payment plan that we structured. Already made the December payment.
Nice. Anything further, anybody? Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
All right. Then we'll move on to item F6. And again, we'll come back to the others. We're just changing the order, which is a recommendation, accept the donations listed below. Items A, 6A through E. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments, other than to thank everyone for these generous donations? Really wonderful.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. So now, back to one, then?
Yes, back to one.
All right. Now, if I remember, we have to take each of these separately? No. I have to take the one? I never get this right. I don't know why.
We can take A through N together.
All right. So I need a motion for items F1, A through N. I apologize for always getting that wrong.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Zucker? And again, I'm Pat O'Brien with the PMC Read-See Team. I am joined here this evening to talk about the high school project by Scott Bindel and Fred Rogers from the Gilbane Ozantin. John could not join us from BSHM this evening. And if I can hit the mute button. Ah, look at that. Okay. So this evening, as you can see, A through N, we have quite a number of change orders. And they are categorized, and we have all five categories of changes here this evening. And those five categories break down as existing unforeseen conditions, we have permitting code requirement issues, we have owner-requested items, some design clarifications, and we have some money coming back to the project. And I have some slides to talk about each one of those, which I will go through, and you can certainly ask questions as we go, or certainly you can... I can get through all five of them. It's up to you. So the first category, existing unforeseen conditions, and this is one we talk about quite frequently. We're not done with all of the existing unforeseen conditions yet, but if you look at the picture on the right side, you can see that at the bottom of where there used to be a way in and out of the building, there was no footer underneath there. And we're going to put a masonry wall, so we had to add a foundation there. If you look in the upper-left corner, you can't see it really well in the picture, but that was in the back of the auditorium. And when we demoed the piece of some of the building that was behind it, we had the same issue where we didn't have the correct structural underpinning for that building. When all the building was there, it supported itself, but we had to add some foundations. The picture in the lower-left, it's a little harder to understand what that one is, but there was... When some modifications were done to the building over time, some pieces of steel were cut that weren't reflected in as-built, and we had a piece of a beam that wasn't there that we had to put back in. Those are some photos that are examples of our existing unforeseen conditions. There were some other items that we also encountered that make up the $200,000 that are in change orders number... Hold on a second. In change orders number 72, 73, 79, 84, and 85, there's some other items as examples, and I don't have pictures of them. But there was a utility line. When we were trying to tie some storm sewers out to Cedar, there was a utility line that we didn't see. Wasn't on an as-built that they ran into. They had to go around. There were some issues in the auditorium basement where we took some mechanical equipment out and some ductwork, and it should have been fine once you take the equipment out, but we had to put some structural supports in for it. There were a range of other issues. We had another place where we're going to put micro piles in. The elevations of those micro piles didn't match the elevations of the existing underground between the Area A of the building and the old Area B. So there were a wide range of unforeseen conditions that, again, that are captured in those five change orders, 72, 73, 79, 84, and 85 totaling $200,000.
Now, these are all issues that we've... I mean, you're talking, especially the micro pile. I mean, these are all things that we, you know, from a construction standpoint, we are well past... It's a matter of processing the paperwork.
That's correct. That's correct. And again, for folks who may not be aware, when we find the problem, the contractor identifies that, hey, there's a problem here that we didn't see, asks for input from the design team to help solve the problem, and the contractors also will provide some input on what they think the most cost-effective solution is. When we come up with a design solution, the contractors then get approval to move forward, and we track what those costs are. As you can see up there from the photos, we have one from April, end of April, one from June, and one from October. The process of making sure that we've checked all the high-level... Not high level, all the lowest level of detail of what those costs are, that validate, in fact, that we're getting fair market value for the work that's done. That process takes, you know, in some cases, upwards of six months after the work is done. And that's why some of this costs lag, so that, in fact, that we know that, you know, we're getting, again, the good value for the work that has to be in place.
Now, in these things, I know we've had these before. We're talking the micro... There was really, because the drawings said one thing, and then the contractor on that day, in '26, or '30, or '58, did something different, there was no way for us to know these until we took stuff out.
That's correct. That's correct. And there's a couple of places where we found, again, when we put additions on the building, they modified structural steel, and it's not reflected anywhere in the drawings, and it's behind a wall. You wouldn't have known. You couldn't have guessed. Even if we would have x-rayed it, we probably wouldn't have seen it. You know, so there are, again, that's why they fall into that heading of unforeseen conditions. There are things that we would expect either the architect or the construction manager to know about. These don't fall in that category.
So then, what number change orders again?
Number 72, 73, 79, 84, and 85.
Okay. Got it.
Did your total page include that? I mean...
Yes. Yeah, on my summary... Oh, if you go back, yeah, this slide just gives you the totals, the 201... That's the sum of those five.
Okay.
201, 076.
Yes.
Okay. Our next category, permitting and code issues. This one was only $8,000. I say only. It's by comparison. Still, it's $8,715. I put a little red arrow down there where you're coming off of Washington Boulevard. The fire department asked us to make that radius a little bit bigger, make that driveway a little bit wider, so their fire truck had no issues whatsoever getting in there. You know, it's not something we had a choice to do, and we want to make sure the fire department has no issues whatsoever if, in fact, there was an event there. So we had to widen that driveway a little bit, move a curb, $8,700.
I do a question. I know they pay the angled parking off of Washington. That's all one section's unpaid, and the other section, then there's some sort of... I think it's gas valve that's sort of like still above ground that wasn't there before. Is that... Do we know what?
There was a manhole that was over in that area that we didn't know was in the ground. Gas valve, is there? Scott?
That's our temporary gas meter.
Oh, okay. There's a gas meter that's supposed to be there.
Still, it's a permitting figure.
Gotcha. Okay.
In a situation like that, wouldn't we know that at the design phase that that's not wide enough?
Well, it's a really good question, Ron. What happens is, we send, I don't... But the architect sends the drawings over to the city and says, please review this and tell us any concerns, questions, issues that you have. And the city looks at them, and not uncommon, not just the city of Cleveland Heights, in just about every jurisdiction I've ever worked in, the folks in the plans examining side look at it, but then when we start building it, they come out and they look at it in person. And instead of in two dimensions, you see it in three dimensions, and because they have that authority, they're the authority having jurisdiction in this area, they can say, yeah, I know I signed off on that, but I think I'd like it a little bit wider just in case. That is not an unusual situation.
So the situation is that we had the cut in there already, and we had to go back in and widen it?
We had to make it a little bit wider, and we had some structures that were there related to the curbs and the storm that we had to move back just a little bit so we could move the curb back.
But from a construction standpoint, it's as sound as it was if we had done it at the beginning?
Correct. It's, again, it's, you know, when the fire department says, I'm not sure if my fire truck can get in there unimpeded at, you know...
So if they ever run over the curb, then we got a case, right?
Yeah.
I know, that's right.
That's part of what we're trying to avoid, you know, so that they don't have issues that would damage their vehicle or, again, cause them any kind of, you know, problems or issues. And again, you look at it, and you say, okay, well, 24-foot wide drive, you know, that's what we have to have. Maybe we make it 26, 20. I don't know what the dimension was. But it's... I've had fire departments ask me to pave a road all the way around the entire building when I build a building out in the middle of a greenfield site in a rural area, which I didn't do. But they become very particular with respect to their access and the ease of access for their vehicles, which I wouldn't disagree with either, because, you know, you certainly don't want to have any problems when it comes time for emergency vehicles. It's just that you try to do the background. It's not unusual that they find other little things. When we go to open the building, we've had a full review of the fire alarm system and all of the exits, and we've, you know, the code officials have been out there and inspecting. It's not unusual, when we go to get the final occupancy inspection, for them to say, could you add another strobe here, or another device there, you know, another couple of fire alarm devices? So even though they reviewed it and they looked at it, again, when you see it live, 3D, in person, sometimes they'll ask us to add a couple of little pieces and parts at the end as well.
Well, wasn't that one of the issues with Wiley? And it sort of drove the cost up with Wiley? Weren't there fire... I know they had to redo some of the fire systems.
At Wiley, after we opened the building, the fire alarm system worked fine. Everything was functional, and we were in compliance with the code. But what we decided to do was replace an aging fire alarm panel that worked, but we had some concerns about it over the longer run. Again, when we opened the building, everything worked. Even when we did fire alarm, fire drills, everything worked. But we said, you know, it's... Every once in a while, in one room, we might not hit the 60 decibels when the, you know, when the device is activated. And again, technically, we met all the code requirements, but we said, you know, we don't want to be technically, you know, just barely meeting technical requirements. So at Wiley, we spent, I think, $35,000 replacing a fire alarm panel that, again, it would serve its purpose, but at some point, we knew that it was nearing the end of its useful life. We were expecting that we could get three, four more years out of it. But that was kind of a, you know, looking after we opened the building and said, you know, just to be safe, let's do an extra upgrade on that. So that's our permitting code issues. Our next category is work that we added, work scope that we added. And there were two things that we added to the project. The first one was shower station drains in the science rooms, in science lab rooms. And I showed you a picture. This is a science room that's on the stadium side of the auditorium, and I tried to put a little red arrow up there where the door, the door is right above the arrow, and inside it's hard to tell, but there's an eyewash station and a shower. We have science... This is a chemistry lab. We have two chemistry labs and two science labs that are specifically labs. We have additional science rooms, but these are where they would do experiments. And we had a shower as well as an eyewash. The shower is not required to have a drain with it by code, and when, I think the folks on the Gilbane team pointed it out to us, their plumbing contractor said, are you sure you don't want a drain with these showers? And we said, you know, I think we do. You know, with an eyewash station, eyewash stations have a little bit of a drain with them, and they're not in a regular science room where we're not handling chemicals. Didn't seem as critical, but in these, there's four rooms that have the showers in them. I think it's four rooms, Scott? It's... There's one on this, one on each side of the auditorium, and there's one on the third floor, not the room... There are science rooms, but there's rooms next to science resource rooms. So there's four rooms where we said, I think we ought to have a drain that's tied into the shower, unlikely event that it goes. But so that was, again, not a code-required thing, but something that the design team overlooked in terms of, you know, pure requirements versus something we wanted and we thought was a good idea to have in those four rooms.
And that's the $10,569?
Let me look at my chart just to make sure.
Which change?
Yes, $10,569.
The reason I ask is because, God forbid, we use it once or twice, it's... If there's no drain and you got all this water, there's a possibility that you in the future would incur that kind of expense.
Well, you potentially damage the floor, you know, there's other issues. I mean, eyewash station, again, doesn't... It generates water, but not the kind of water a shower does. And someone's going to trigger the shower because it was a chemical accident, there was a chemical problem, you're going to want to make sure that you have enough volume of water, but then it creates a bigger mess.
I guess I welcome my strange little world. Where was the water going to go if you didn't have a drain? You just... Somebody come and mop it up afterwards?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems like a drain makes sense to me.
Well, and I can...
No drain, it doesn't go anywhere.
That did happen on the old third floor when we renovated it in, I think, 2011. We created those new science rooms. And once, in, I think, the two or three years after that, the... One of the showers was triggered accidentally by a student, and custodial staff were not happy.
Just so everybody understands, and you've been fairly clear about this, if not very clear about this, the showers are emergency use only.
Correct.
I'm feeling a little dirty today.
Strictly a safety issue.
Yeah. We did the tours of Monticello for the assessment tour. That was one of the things the maintenance guy explained was, the showers in the two science labs in Monticello, which used to be the library, it didn't drain anywhere. So God forbid, whenever that would happen, it just drains to the... There's a pipe, there's a drain on the floor, but it doesn't... Exactly. It doesn't really go anywhere except for the rooms below. It doesn't really go to a drain.
Doesn't help. Right. Okay. The other questions on the eyewash stations? The other chunk, and the much more significant chunk, a little over $600,000, well, actually $650,000, was adding new furniture throughout the building. When we first, you know, put the budget together for the furniture for the project, the idea was, you know, we buy furniture on a recurring basis. Can we try to repurpose some of that furniture? And for example, the library shelving that we have, we took out of the high school, the old high school, moved it over to Wiley. That stuff's in good shape. It looks good. The problem is, one of the things we did, we asked our folks at HWH, our move consultant, and said, hey, give us a rough idea. When we take it apart and move it again and put it back there, is that a significant cost? And they said, it is. And the other challenge would be, it wouldn't necessarily match architecturally the rest of that space. So we, you know, the more we looked at how we wanted to serve the building, we wanted to be able to say that, again, we've got brand-new classrooms, we want to be able to have furniture that matches that, and we also want to match it architecturally. So we started with a budget that was probably lower, not probably, definitely lower than it needed to be, it should have been. And so that's what this change order does, is it accomplishes the mission of providing new furniture throughout the entire building. And there are some specialty equipments that we are going to relocate, career tech items, like I think Brad bought some new sewing machines recently. We'll move those. There are, again, some special equipments, but this building will have new furniture throughout the building.
So the way I understood it in our committee meetings is you basically had a million-dollar allowance through the construction project.
Correct.
So, and this is a 600, rounding, a $650,000 enhancement. So the total furniture in the building is 1.6...
Correct.
...million. And in the budgets that we've been using, basically, we're budgeting about 1.5 million.
Correct.
Approximately.
Mm-hmm.
Approximately. Because we've been working with Steve Friedman's numbers and we've been working with, you know, Brad's numbers as well. So Brad's numbers have pretty much eclipsed now Steve Friedman's number. So this really is a 150,000 dollar. The surprise is probably not, not the right word, but I think when we sort of look at it in the way it was explained to me, and we've really spent a lot of time, you know, actually looking at counting chairs and more so you than me. I mean, they, I mean, the architecture team and the design team's given us blueprints where all this stuff's going to go. I mean, I, I mean, I'm very satisfied with it. I mean, I bought a lot of furniture in my day. I mean, I think the value that we're getting is pretty incredible. And I think Gilbain was, was very helpful in getting good, good bid day savings for us on that.
We had some opportunities to lower the quality level and we, you know, we did not want to do that. We did not want to buy a student chair from a lesser manufacturer that might not last, you know, the goal is this stuff should last 20 years. You know, so we didn't want to, we don't want to compromise that to try to save $30,000 here, $40,000 there. You know, we thought that was a better investment in, in, you know, to stay with what the quality level that was established by the design team.
Well, I'm worried that we've got two moves going on this summer. We've got the moves from the middle schools to Wiley and then Wiley to the high school. And I know it's very complicated, but it seems to me if we can still stay as close to the budget as we can, we're saving on our moving costs, it, it almost seems like this is a good value for us. And then on top of it, you get, you know, new furniture and you get furniture that is architecturally matching the building.
Right.
So let me take a slightly different approach on it and I apologize for putting you on the spot, but the, as beautiful as the building is for the community and as beautiful as this is going to be an asset for everyone in the community, the main users of the building are the students.
Right.
Do you feel that having this type of furniture is going to enhance the student experience? So, I mean, from my standpoint, I think the reason we're doing this is because it's better for the students. Am I, am I off base by saying that?
No, you're, you're right on target and I think that's the reason we, we pushed for it. Wanted to make sure, as Pat stated, we, the community made a big investment in these new facilities. So we wanted to make sure that we honor the students who are going to be in those buildings by getting them the furniture and equipment that they need. So that was important. And so I, I appreciate you guys going back and reevaluating the initial plans and making sure that we have what the students need.
Right.
So, you know, so I think that piece is, is very important. Yeah, I think there will be some savings, I hope. So, because we're not, as Jim stated, moving-
Correct.
-old furniture around and, and, you know, back and forth, because it has a, would have a good place to be utilized at Wiley with the middle schools.
Right. We, yeah, I mean, basically, what is in Wiley is staying in Wiley and what we will move from the middle schools is the teachers teaching tools themselves. When last time, we moved a lot of furniture.
Right.
So my, my only point is that I'm, and it's obvious, I'll say it anyway, is as much as I'm never crazy about any of these positive value change orders, if this is better for the educational experience of the, of the students, that's the reason we're building the building.
Correct.
One of the things, I mean, when we looked at the furniture, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the overwhelming majority of the student desks, instead of the, let's say your traditional high school, you're, the desk and the chair are all one unit. These, I think the majority, the overwhelming majority of these are, it's a desk and it's a chair.
Right.
So I know that gives a lot more flexibility for small group breakout and things like that. And there's more form flexibility. And the other thing, and you guys know I'm always harping on, is from a design aesthetic, we don't have the, we had these very unusual and creative colors from the 70s, which then haunted us. I think the color palette and what they've done has been very, it's attractive, but it's also very neutral. So it gives us, again, it's not going to look, in five or 10 years, it's not going to look dated, which I think was positive. I've always was pushing, hey, how much can we reuse? But again, it goes to the, I don't want to say opportunity cost, but the logistical cost and challenges that, and also lifespan. If you get something that's 10 or 15 years old and you're moving it once or twice versus, and I'm going to say, it's not going to be, the lifespan, my expectation is not 20 years. I'm expecting, we got furniture, we started using from 30, 40 years ago. My expectation is we're going to get as much mileage of it as possible.
You don't want orange chairs? Is that what I heard?
Well, no, I don't. It's better, better the chair than the wall, let me put it that way.
Thanks. Okay. Our next, our next topic is design clarifications, which is a nice way of saying there are things that we would have hoped the architect caught before they got to this point. And I show you this picture because we've got, you know, stone that's out on the building and we have a picture of the roof to the right is the new section of the building where we put the addition on. And we didn't have a detail that accurately showed the folks on the Gilbain side how to tie the roof in where that stone was. And there were a number of items that, that fall into that category and it's approximately 229,000, not approximately, it's 229,401 dollars worth of those items. And it included things like some overhead rolling doors that didn't tie into the fire alarm system. We had a water cooler that didn't actually have GFI power. Water, electricity, you've got to have a GFI. So again, those are things that you would hope the design team would have caught. There's no perfect set of design documents. It's just when the accumulation of them is, is a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's, you know, obviously not something you want to do, but there's certainly things you have to correct. We also had some storm drain lines that ran through the auditorium that got rerouted. We knew we were going to take them out because actually part of them, some, one of them were leaking into the plaster. And they didn't do a good job on the design side of clarifying how those storm drain lines were going to be reconnected and how they were going to get out of the building. And that was a significant cost change to us. So there were a number of things that, that they should have picked up. Again, no, no perfect design documents, but that's our category of design clarifications.
These would all fall under, fall under betterment. So basically, if they, if they-
If they would have seen it correctly, we would have paid for it.
Right.
We might have paid a better price. The CMR would have had a better opportunity to get a better price in a competitive environment versus a change order.
Okay.
Okay?
But it's work we would have had to do.
Right.
Oh, no question. Yeah, we would have had to do the work regardless.
And that's why you have a contingency.
Correct. And then our last category, when we were reviewing the cameras, I think we have 265 cameras in, around, on the building. We actually engaged not just our security director, but we also asked our outsourced security vendor and actually the folks at US Protective, Chuck Hayes, said, you know, we have Acti cameras now. Instead of Sony cameras, you ought to think about making the switch. There's software issues. And as it turns out, we got $48,000 back just by switching camera manufacturers. Same functionality, it's compatible with everything else we do.
Quality.
Same quality, yes. Oh, yeah. And, and, you know, and I got that not just from the vendor, the folks on the contracting side, the folks on the design side, our security monitor team and our director of security all agree that you don't necessarily need a Sony camera. An Acti camera is just as good. So, $48,000 back.
Any, any other questions, anyone? Anything else?
Mm-mm.
And just, I mean, we've heard a little bit from each of you, but Jim and Eric, I know you, we know you reviewed these things ahead of time. Anything that you want to add to this discussion at all?
Well, it's frustrating that, I mean, many of these things happened in April and earlier at times. And it just takes so long before they actually end up here. And the work ends up getting done before it actually gets here. I wish the process would go faster. I don't think this is a fault of our team. I just think it's just the way things work.
And I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think the folks on the Gilbain side have also recognized that this process could go faster. And I think, Scott, you guys added another person on your team to help process these. And, you know, the goal is, you know, first quarter of next year to get cleaned up. We still have a little bit of a backlog, but, you know, to get caught back up on those.
So once the building opens, we're, we're done with change orders, right? I mean, that's-
Not necessarily.
Well, wait, I'm, I'm hoping.
That's a fantastic suggestion.
Okay.
I'm not sure contractually we can enforce that, but I would like to, I, I think that that is-
It's not true. They got the 45 day-
It's not a wedding gift. I mean, yeah, building's open, it's open.
Well, no.
It's not like you're driving a car off the lot, you know, it doesn't increase in value.
Well-
All right.
We've had some situations where we drove the car off the lot and we had a change order. We, it's called recall.
That's, okay. You've got a K car.
Anything else that you have for-
Well, yeah, I got it.
No, I, we got our own side number.
Are we, is Scott going to talk to us tonight?
You are correct, sir.
Huh?
Yes.
Which Scott? There's like five in the room.
He's going to show some, he's going to show some photos and talk about progress.
Just real quick, so the, the warranty on this new, this camera system, but the same?
Yes. Oh, yes. I think actually some of the cam, well, they're at least equal and maybe greater than. There's no compromise on warranty.
Okay.
That's never an option.
All right, then Mr. Gaynor, the role, please.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to item F2, recommendation to award the high school furnishing bid package to School Specialty Incorporated.
Couple of things if I could, Mr. Zucker. First of all, we don't need to do that one.
Okay.
I, I had asked Mary, she didn't need to put that on the agenda because we had that in a change order.
That's what I thought. It sounded like something we just talked about.
Yeah, redundant. But I would like, if you don't mind, have Mr. Bindel come up and give us a little update on the, on the construction progress.
I definitely don't mind.
Okay.
So another month, another month of progress on the building. I'm Scott Bindel with Gilbain Building Company. Pause that. We've got a good cross-section of the construction process right now. Where the heck I can pause that? We have up on the third floor of the classroom wings, we have nearly finished classrooms. We have casework. Since this, since this photo was taken, we've gotten ceiling in these classrooms. We've got carpet loaded into the building. So that's where we're working, top down on the classroom wings. So we have, you can start to picture the teachers usable casework in here where you've got, you've got plenty of counter space, plenty of cabinet space, plenty of book storage. As you go down lower in the building, it's, it's varying degrees of finished in the front half of the building. So this is the mini auditorium, which will be used for some community events, some in-house events. I'm sure there will be some board meetings held in here. But this is the mini auditorium. You can see the sloped floor that's going to get fixed audience seating. You see the, the built-in stage up front. You've got plenty of natural light. And moving on down into one of the athletic spaces, this is down in, in the Washington level, which is your lowest level, the, the west side of the building. And this is where you have a lot of plumbing in the walls. This is just kind of a view of a space you don't normally see. These will become locker rooms, shower rooms, bathrooms. Some of these are, some of these are the home, the home and visitor football locker rooms. So you see that this is just, this is before the walls go up, which we've, this week started the walls in this area. But you see that just a lot of plumbing in this case. And here you've got the accent color being sprayed on the competition gym ductwork. You're getting your, your heights gold in here to, then again, you see the, the translucent glazing in here, which allows plenty of natural light in during the daytime hours. And it allows some of the light to filter out a little bit to create that backlit glow during events in the evening hours. And over here, you see some of the ceiling go in. You can start to picture the spaces. Again, natural light, natural light. You've got a lot of windows in these spaces. You can see the windows from the outside and each classroom typically has, has five of these large openings. Some of the larger, some of the larger classrooms have more. And you've got the casework tucked back here in this nook. And all LED lighting. And this is the pool. This is one of the shots available on our webcam. This is the 13-foot deep end and then it shallows up to the 3.6 shallow end. You've got the diving boards on this side. And this is one of the middle levels. This is, this is the second floor, which we've since started painting down the corridors. But again, just another view of the building that you don't see sometimes with some of the overhead rough in and a shot down the corridors. But we've got a lot of drywall in the building, a lot of paint in the building. And on the back half of the building, we've, we're, we're substantially dried it in the back half of the building. So now we're start looking into finishes in the back half of the building and the athletic spaces. All yours, Pat.
Still on schedule for opening school, so-
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, I mean, everything is, is going very well. Building's enclosed now, so you don't, you might not see a lot of people outside the building, but there's a lot of folks on the inside of the building.
Yeah, we've definitely taken a break on site work for the winter.
It looks good.
Thanks very much for bringing us some pictures.
Just a couple of questions. I guess the, the, the question of when that we're going to start our school on time, can you tell, say a little bit about the backend of our schedule? I know that at some point, you're, you're all ready for inspections, final inspections and all that stuff. You're doing a punch list and all that. What, at what point do we think we will be able to move into the building? Because if school opens in August, we've got to get in there before August. What, what, what kind of date are we talking about?
We're going to start putting furniture in the building in May, Ron. And so, you know, Scott was telling-
Get to the mic, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to start putting furniture in the building in May. You know, in May and June, by July, all the furniture's in. We're going to start moving items out of Wiley, you know, down the street, not immediately after school, but shortly after school ends. They'll still be working on punch list, but they, the third floor classrooms, you know, your first areas, we're just going to go, your, the first areas will be finished and we'll start doing punch work on those in certainly, you know, probably by April.
April.
Yeah, by April, we'll be punching out parts of the building. You know, so, but because it's such a large building, it's sequentially going to go, you know, you know, several months. So, you know, parts of the building will look like they're done. The whole building won't be done. We're going to start, like I said, we'll start moving furniture in, we'll start moving the contents in from Wiley. And, you know, we'll have, you know, right now, we know without question, you know, the, the plan is to be 100% signed off August 1st, so that when the teachers come back, when any of the staff comes back, you know, they're, they're showing up down there. We're working on trying to get that back, you know, in, in further into July. But like I said, we're, we know right now we're, we're moving, you know, moving furniture in in May, June, and, you know, we're working on punching parts of that building out, certainly by then.
Okay. When can we tour the building again?
You guys are welcome to come down, you know.
How safe is it?
Not Friday afternoon.
Not, not this Friday. No, that's not, not so good.
How safe is it? Can, can it, you know, some members of the community have talked about being able to tour the building. When can we sort of schedule some folk to come in or sometime? Should we wait until March?
One of the challenges in the winter is, you know, is on site on Monday and there's ice everywhere. And they, they got guys putting salt down. You know, we have some, we have the roads that are paved, the, the base course is paved. So I guess, you know, in terms of when can we have a board tour, when we have a public tour, if it's eight to 10 people, if it's 50 to 60 people, it's different, kind of different mechanics of that. But I don't, you know, again, the logistics of doing the tours, which is kind of Gilbain's building and Gilbain's site. So kind of what, you know, how do you guys?
But I, I'd like for us to start thinking about that.
Sure. No, no, again, we, you know, there, there are, there's no issue getting folks down there. We just want to make sure they're safe getting out of the building. The hard part now too is it's, it's dark at 4:30 and it's hard for folks to get over there. And you don't want to, you go in the building and it's-
I don't have to go this week. I'm just, let's just think about-
Sure.
Getting this, you know, because I, I really think it's an important thing that we need to do. I think we all are feeling good about the building and I think the, our public is feeling good about the building and they're curious, you know. People drive by every day and say, yeah, that high school looks like it's coming along pretty good. When can we go in? You know, so anyway, I think we ought to start thinking about what that looks like and when we would invite people in.
Sure. No, I, I, that's, I think that's a great idea, Ron, and we'd love to have folks come down and take a look at it, especially if they haven't been there in a while.
When will you expect to have, I think you're, I know you had a mock-up classroom you're using for the trades for setting up the other ones. When do you anticipate having a mock-up with furniture?
It'll be at least a couple of months yet because we haven't even, I mean, we haven't even awarded the contract, obviously.
Oh, gotcha.
So it's going to be at least a couple of months.
Well, I would suggest, I, I would think once you have a mock-up classroom, ideally, if you have a mock-up classroom and then start doing the tours, like having more community focus and, and high profile, high profile, but key communicators to visit the building. I think that'd be great.
Ron, I want to just sort of add to some of your comments about the tours. I mean, we, three months ago, maybe, we invited some community leaders and elected officials in the building. And some of those pictures got out on Facebook and there, you know, people were, some people were upset because they weren't included. And I'm, and they were not a community leader and they weren't an elected official. I mean, so I think when we set up those tours, it was very specific and good rationale to do it. I mean, for example, we had community officials from the city of Cleveland Heights walk in the building. And it helps us have a dialogue with them about staffing the, the pool. Because the way it's been to date is we supply the facility, it's a community pool, the city provides the lifeguards and so forth. So having, for example, the mayor of Cleveland Heights in that building and seeing the pool, it provides us to have those kind of dialogues. I do think we need to have another one of those sets of community meetings. But, but then we need to be prepared for the fact where if a community member driving by wants to see the building, I think we need to start thinking now about, okay, well, when will, you know, maybe, you know, parents be able to go in and get to it?
That's, that's the point that I'm raising, that the officials are fine, but the people that I talk to mostly are not, they're not necessarily those people. And I just think, you know, when we, I think we ought to be real thoughtful about it. I think we ought to say that this is an opportunity and, you know, we start thinking about, and, and have several of those opportunities is, is the way I would see it.
And we're thinking about, I mean, we're planning some dates, but again, safety is our priority right now. And, and it is a construction site, so we don't want to be-
March sounds really good to me.
You know, it's after March. I just want to make sure. I know a lot of people are curious, but we wanted to make sure that it's a safe space for people to go and, and visit.
One suggestion I might have would be that it's great that we get the photos from our updates, but I would suggest if there's a possibility of having more, you've got folks out there taking photographs. If we have more images and then we have our- If we have more images, and then we have our Scott Wardman put them out. If we had more than just a six, I think that might be a good way to get more, okay, you can't have a tour, but instead of, hey, with all, I mean, the interest level for the plumbing in the basement locker rooms probably isn't as much as a classroom with furniture, the auditorium, the cap. I mean, the more, the spaces that people can really identify, I think, the more that, if we can get more images out there, that certainly negates that, hey, I didn't get to go on the tour component.
Yeah. And Scott is working with his team and high school team on a student project.
Right. That'd be great, yeah.
To get some students to do some photos and some videos, and so he's working on that piece.
Yeah. I'm never real sure when to say things, but I work at it. And I think it's, I'm absolutely fascinated by what has happened along the perimeters with the choose public. And publicly, I think we should go on record thanking the Dietrichs.
Nancy's here tonight, so that's who Ron's pointing to.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely fascinating. And I think it's the right message at the right time, and we need to be doing a lot more of that, you know. And that's my commitment.
It looks beautiful. We get a lot of positive feedback out of Nancy's. Thank you so much.
Yes, 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 yes.
And all those pictures. I mean, it's just wonderful.
Well, it puts faces to the building and it becomes very human rather than just a building project. Sorry to our guys who over there just building.
And I think that's maybe why people are so eager to want to go inside, because it has the big sign that says it's coming soon, you know, and it's opening and-
But just sort of close that part of the conversation, and I think all, this has already been said, but clearly, this isn't something we just can decide ad hoc that, okay, let's just open up and everybody can come whenever they want.
We'll work on what we can do and-
Right, and how to do this.
As we get into '17.
Yeah, exactly.
Let Mr. President do that.
Okay, then. I told you it was going to be tough tonight. All right. So are you guys all set? I don't want to cut you off.
Gets it for the high school.
All right. I really appreciate, thanks. As I tell you each time, Scott, it's really very nice for you to bring these things. You know, we get to see it. We see a lot of things through our packets, but it's important for the public to see the progress. So thanks so much for doing that.
Happy to do it.
All right. All right, so now we will skip over F2 because we don't need that.
Correct.
We're going to go to F3. Is that okay?
Yes.
F3, Recommendation Authorizing the Execution of Moody Nolan. And the word execution is never really good here, so let me read all the way through. Recommendation Authorizing the Execution of Moody Nolan Incorporated Contract Amendment Number One Between the Board of Education of Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District and Moody Nolan Incorporated. I need a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
All right.
Okay, the original contract with Moody Nolan was approximately $2.9 million, and this amendment takes their contract value down to $2.45, $5 million, reflected in the difference in scope of work that we will now have at the middle schools from when they were originally engaged. So this is an amendment getting $422,608 back to the district.
Questions, comments, anyone? Okay, Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Thank you, by the way. Item, I need a motion for item F4, the recommendation to award the Monticello and Roxborough Commissioning Agent Services to Schiezer?
Schiezer.
Okay, Schiezer, Buckley, Mayfield Consulting Engineers.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. O'Brien, anything you want to say on this?
Yes. This is going to be our proposed commissioning agent for the two middle school projects. We got proposals from three firms, Heapy, who's our commissioning agent at the high school, Brewer Garrett, and the folks at Schiezer Buckley Mayfield. Each are pre-qualified commissioning agents on the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission list of pre-qualified commissioning agents. We looked at the qualifications, interviewed them, and Mr. Petcak and I interviewed the three firms, got input from Doug Lancashire Osborne, the mechanical engineering, the engineering firm on the Moody Nolan team. And we all concluded that the Schiezer Buckley Mayfield folks were best suited for what we're going to be doing for commissioning on the middle school projects. The other thing I would note is, our budget for this was $264,000, and this is a cost of $180,000. So this is also coming in favorably for us.
And the commissioning agent is, what, a third party who basically signs off on what we've done for OSFC, correct?
Not exactly.
Then what is it?
Well, part of what the commissioning is going to do is peer review the design. And one of the reasons we thought that Schiezer Buckley Mayfield was going to be really helpful for us is the mechanical, the HVC, putting heating and cooling in these middle schools is going to be challenging. And not that we don't think the folks at Moody Nolan and the folks at Osborne can't do it, but SBM does the same thing. Part of what they brought to the table was a lot of experiencing very similar types of older buildings, renovating them. So they will peer review the design and provide comments as we go. They're looking at things like operational efficiency, same as Osborne is, but it's two different engineers will see things slightly differently. So they will look at the design phases for us and make sure that we are, you know, getting the optimal design at the best kind of long-term capital cost. And then, when we get to the construction piece, part of what they'll look at is the installation. They look at, when we, you know, for example, replace parts of roofs, they will look at those to make sure that installation is going in accordance, not just with what the design says, but just as another third party to help verify everything is working the way it's supposed to.
So that's required under the Ohio Facilities Commission?
It is a part of the Facilities Commission program, but it's also, I mean, it's a good idea. Even if they weren't going to recommend it, I mean, I do it on private projects because it's, again, it's another third party, you know, professional firm that will provide that oversight and input. We get reports at the high school from the folks at Heapy that things that, again, things generally that Gilbain and BSM are aware of, but then kind of provide a third-party view of, for example, did you see somebody, you know, left a wrench on this part of the roof and it's a little bit discolored, you got to make sure you fix that. So it's a person that helps us in terms, again, making sure that we have a building that's 100% functional and operational.
So technically, they work for the Facilities Commission?
No, they work for us. They're pre-qualified. What the state, the state of Ohio has done is, they do a solicitation every two or three years and ask firms who are interested in being pre-qualified by them to submit their qualifications to, and there's a pretty standard scope of services. The state says, okay, these folks meet the cut and can do this scope of work. And the state also establishes a dollar per square foot that they pay folks. And so, that's one of the, it's like buying furniture on state term, except we're buying a professional service.
So do we end up having a set to choose from and we issue RFP or something?
That's correct. That's correct, Ron. That's excellent. That is actually what we do. There, I think, a tent, well, I don't remember the exact number, but there's a group of folks on there. And, you know, we say, hey, are you guys interested in these projects? And not all of the firms are interested in all of the projects, based on their current workload, based on their regional location, based on the type of project. These are challenging projects.
What they have to do is certify to us or get a certificate from the commission saying that they are-
No, the state, they publish their list. It's on their website. So that's how you know, I see these guys are on the list. We're good.
Okay.
So a couple of quick questions. What I think I heard you say, and I heard two different words. I heard you say that this is, I think you consider a best practice.
Correct.
But is it required or recommended? I heard required and recommended. It doesn't, not that it really matters since it's a best practice, I just want to understand.
Because we're in the expedited local partnership program, I don't know if it's required. I think that it would be, I don't know, I have to get back to you on that one, Cal. The state would be, they would strongly recommend it.
All right, then that's good.
I know if we're in CFAP, it's required.
That's good enough. I just, Ron, again, I did. But again, bringing you into my strange and wonderful little world. Given that we have this second, this peer review thing going on. So let's say we get down the road and we're in the construction part and there are change orders. So now we have people who've recommended something. We have another peer review that says, this is what you need to do. And if a change order goes against that, is there accountability from this group of people?
The engineer of record remains the engineer of record. And a commissioning agent can make recommendations about things that we should or shouldn't change or do differently, but ultimately, it still falls back onto the engineer of record. So the commissioning agent does not have the authority to make a change or to, they can make a recommendation. You know, and we certainly take that input, and they bring their input to us concurrently to the folks on the engineering team. But ultimately, they don't have the responsibility to, they don't have, they're not allowed, they can't make a change and they can't direct a contractor to make a change.
Are they with us throughout the project?
Yeah, that's why we bring them on board now. I mean, they participated in the eco shoot that we had on December 7th.
And I guess maybe I wasn't even thinking in a situation where there's a disagreement, if you can call that a disagreement. But what about in a situation where they're sort of in agreement? They all, they, it was a design, they looked at the design, and then there's a change order because both of them missed it. Is there any accountability there?
Part of the scope of work of the commissioning agent is, they're not, because they're not a design professional, they don't have a liability for that specifically, I think, to answer your question. So the short answer, I think, is no.
Okay, and I'm just going to throw this out. And I did hear, and I think maybe it's Jim who said, or you may have said yourself, I think you both did. In many situations where we have change orders, those change orders are things we would have had to do anyway. It's just that doing it later as a change order is more costly or not the most efficient way to do it, let's put it that way. And that's all fine. I heard the thing about the change in the driveway at the high school, and I get the politics of, look, you know, we missed this, could you do this? And why it's not on the grand scale of the cost of the project, I can see why you, it's not a fight worth having. But arguably, people, it's difficult for people like us to see where, people make mistakes and the only one who pays for those mistakes is us. So maybe you can help us through that a little bit. I mean, again, I'm not saying that, again, it's not a huge dollar figure because we would have had to do it anyway. But help us, because we have to explain this to a public who's saying, you need to do everything you can to keep it on budget.
Part of your question, Cal, speaks to the way the law in the state of Ohio and the way it is in most states, United States, is structured with respect to design firms' responsibility. And their responsibility is to design to the standard of care, which is the normal expectation of practice in that region, in that area. How do you define that? You know, how do you determine that an architect did or did not meet that standard? And I am not an attorney, but I think if you're, you talk to your construction council, they would advise you that to determine whether or not an architect met that is something you end up in front of a jury for and a judge. You know, if you feel like the sum of all of the mistakes that somebody made as a design professional on a project, you know, reached that level, then you have that conversation, you know, within between, you know, your council and their firm. And, you know, so that is, ultimately, the liability lies with the design professional. And we try to put a series of checks and balances in place to limit that happening. So, again, you know, who has that ultimate liability and responsibility is the design professional? You know, when do you kind of hold them accountable? Do you do that? Can you do that? You can. Typically, that is, you kind of see how the project ends and, you know, what the sum of that is.
Sure. And you and I have this conversation probably more often than you want. But, again, you as our owner's rep, I just, I'm not looking to litigate a bunch of things. It doesn't work well for anyone, frankly.
Little lawyers.
But me personally, I don't have a problem with people making sure that people know when, we really expect a little more. So that's sort of on your shoulders as our owner's rep, I think. So if you can just keep that in mind as we go forward.
Sure.
All right. Thanks. That's all I've got on that. Any other comments? All right, then. Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
All right, so there's something else?
Yes, there is. There are some things we'd like to talk to you about the middle schools. And there are some folks I want to introduce. First, I'd like to introduce Doug Myers from the PMC Readancy Team. He's came on board with the team in September. And I think this is Doug's first board meeting. You know, we're obviously got a lot going on. And so we said, you know what, let's add another person to the team. Doug formerly trained as an architect and was director of Capitol Projects for Tri-C for nine years. And so he is getting up to speed with us on both the high school project and the middle school design. So Doug is with us here this evening. Doug will be here also on January 3rd. We also have this evening from the middle school design team. We've got Jaquiel Sanders and Ann Hartman from Moody Nolan, Doug Lancashire from their Osborne Engineering, from their engineering team. We've got the folks from Turner Construction, our construction manager at risk. We've got Jack Kellogg, Matt, and I'm terrible with last names. Yeah, Matt. And Marty, and Marty from the Turner folks. What we want to talk to you this evening about as part of this is where we are in the middle school design. And Turner has some cost data for you. And just to kind of rewind where we were back in October, I think that was our last formal presentation on the middle schools. At that time, Moody Nolan showed you, I think, maybe eight, 10 slides, but basically trying to capture the essence of what our design parameters are and targets are for the middle school projects. And as you may recall, the, at both buildings, the idea is to improve our educational environment by putting new HVC systems in all the classrooms. Each classroom gets a new heating system, gets air conditioning, gets its own thermostat. And then we repaint and re-carpet each classroom, we update the technology in the classroom, you know, the PA system. Every classroom gets that work. And then we try to, you know, freshen up the interior, excuse me, the entrances to the buildings. And at Monticello, what we would do is make one boys' and girls' locker room for the PE folks. Right now, there are different ends of the building. And then do a little bit of reconfiguration in the library, so we have a counseling area that actually works a little bit better. And then at Roxborough, the major change is in the basement. There is, the sixth grade folks have no restroom in the basement, so we would add that. And again, do some other work in the cafeteria spaces to make them brighter. But again, the primary function is, and do a little bit of work on the roofs. We have some roofs that are near the end of the useful life, replace some of the roofs. But that is the essence of what the plan is at the two middle schools. And in this process, we've asked the folks at Turner to put a cost to what that work scope would be, keeping in mind that we have a hard budget. We have a fixed number that we're going to, we have to hit because we only have so much money. And so I'm going to ask the folks at Turner to come up, and I think you should have a sheet from your packets that summarizes, you know, what our goals are for the work scope. And I'll have them explain what that means as it relates to our $30 million goal for both buildings and what's in and what's not in. And what we'd like to do is get some feedback from the board about some of the ideas they have regarding how do we stay at that $30 million.
Thank you. Again, this is Matt Wazlowski. He did the hard work, the detailed estimate, so any specific questions, Matt's going to help us out with. So the goal was to have a $30 million all-in cost for the schematic design level. And we've established, based on the drawings, right now, we're at $33.235 million, which is obviously over the goal. But then we've given you a path on how to get to $30 million by listing some value management, which is actually about $3.7 million. So if all that value management was approved and selected, we would actually be under budget by about $462,000. So essentially, we've given you an opportunity to not only meet your $30 million goal, but to come in under it, okay? So what we'd like to do today is, you know, we've laid out what's in the base scope. We've laid out some possible value management, and we've laid out some possible other alternates. Some are pluses, some are minuses. And it's, we'd like to discuss those with you and walk out of here today with a clear direction on which of these options you've looked at and which you'd like us to pursue. And then we will reformulate this with the number, and then we'll send it to you for your package. And then you'll be able to vote for that, you'll be able to vote on it at the January 3rd meeting. So again, the goal is, we've gotten you $33.2. We've given you some opportunities, some options to get below the $30 million. There's some other alternatives, alternates we've got, and we want to go through those and land on the correct scope at the number that you have in mind, and we think that's $30 million. And so that's, so, you know, if there are any particular items on the list that you guys have specific questions on or even in general, if you have questions on the scope, we can address those now.
I've got one question on the value management component, and then I have a question in regard to your, the narrative you gave us, I think, as well. I guess the question would be on the AV and teledata as far as to make weight, if you will. What is the scalability such that if we wanted to, in the future, as part of our budget, if we're, you know, I'm not going to- if we're, you know, I'm not gonna look at George and take money out of his budget, but if the district had additional funds in the future, are these things that we could, is it plug and play? I mean, are we basically, we've got in the walls, what we need in the walls, this isn't in there, but if we wanted to later on, then we could purchase additional stuff and plug it in?
Well, the TELA data is easy, because the savings, the value management for TELA data is essentially equipment.
Okay.
So that's a really easy one. And the AV, it was for...
The AV's all equipment as well.
Right.
Okay. So theoretically, then, so there's a distinct possibility that in the future, we could always, if additional revenues are available to the district.
Right.
We could pretty much plug in the wall, and we're good to go.
Right. And that's why that's a great alternative, because it's, you can very easily undo it.
Then my other quest, I guess my question was, and you gave the, sort of the narrative, the question I was gonna pose was two components. One was you have structural reinforcement of existing roof structures for new mechanical equipment. I guess the question I would pose in regard to that is, what's, how much are we talking about? And then also, what's the possibility, the potential, as we've seen with the high school, for cost creep in regard to unforeseen conditions? I mean, are we talking like one or two spots, or are we talking a whole bunch of them? And how much, how much is that going to, are the roof areas around where the equipment's gonna be, is that gonna be a new roof? Or are we just gonna patch a few holes?
Okay, so there's a couple of questions there. The first one is, each school has about seven major pieces of HVC equipment, going on, new pieces of equipment, and I think we had $25,000. So we have $25,000 per location, so a typical school would be $175,000 for the structural modifications. In other words, cut a hole in the roof, provide structural steel, masonry, whatever it's required to support the weight of that equipment, okay? So we have that. We've also got some additional money in for some identified structural issues that were noted by the structural engineers, so that's a separate pot of money we have. So, you know, it's not fully designed, but we feel we've got an adequate allowance to address the structural issues to hold the new, the weight of the new equipment, plus more money for some identified structural issues. So that was the first question, and...
Well, in the second, I guess the area, if you're putting a...
Right, the roofing. So we have money in here for roofing, and we didn't do complete roofing. We had, we have a lot of new roofing in here, but the value management to remove the roofing, if you look down there, that doesn't strip out the patching that we would have to do around the new equipment. So you could take that value management, and we will still, we still have money in there to do the patching that's required around the new equipment.
Okay. And I guess my other one is probably a little bit, two components on it, and it's getting a little into the weeds, but it does have an impact because of something else. We have another mechanical, each classroom will have its own heat pump unit, and existing classroom unit ventilators will be abandoned in place with their outside air intakes blocked off. The question I would pose is, I know in the high school, each classroom has a little closet with a mechanical component. Is that the same thing that each one of these rooms is gonna have a little closet? Or is it in the, the, the reason I ask is that those classrooms are, were, one of the issues we had always was the classrooms are, were snug at 650 square feet, we're not moving the walls, we're not adding square footage. If we're putting a little, you know, a little closet in the corner, that seems to, that's consuming some square footage. And then also, when you're saying air ventilators, is that those blowers in the classroom? Are we not, so, that's not what that is?
Okay. Can we get either Doug or Ann maybe to answer those questions, since they're...
Yeah, I'll answer them if you have a couple of questions.
Could you come up, could you come up to talk to, say, son? Thanks.
Thanks, Ian.
A little stiff?
Yeah, a little stiff. It's that old thing happening. Okay, so to answer your square footage question and the closet question, what we've done is we've recaptured a lot of storage spaces throughout the floor plan, and we've tried to put as many units in some of these spaces as possible to avoid having to do the closet within each classroom. So in the current, the new plan, you'll see that we've got some storage spaces, some of them are shared spaces between classrooms, that we are turning either all of that space or part of those spaces into mini mechanical rooms.
Gotcha. So we did something, so, I mean, some, the high school, we sort of have that too, where you've got these big mechanical spaces, so then, I can understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, and ours are more mini, they're not, you know, huge, huge spaces.
As for the ventilation, each classroom currently has a unit ventilator that will be abandoned in place. We'll be bringing in fresh air from the rooftop unit, so you'll be getting the code-required fresh air through those systems instead of the through-the-wall unit.
Well, I guess, my question is, right now, there's these big mechanical things, and I remember them vividly as a student, because we would beat the hell out of them as a student.
Right.
We're not, we're just gonna leave, they're gonna be inactive and left in place?
Correct.
I'd be very curious to have a price to take them out, because I, it seems a little silly to have something that's inactive, that's bulky, that's sitting there in the room. So I would be curious to see, because, and again, it's a way for us to pick up some square footage in those spaces.
Sure. I can let Jack speak to the cost, but with each of those units, they penetrate the outside wall, so if you were to remove those, you're gonna have large openings in every classroom wall. So there's, there would be a significant amount of masonry work to be done to fill those, those openings. So, again, I can let Jack speak to the cost, but I think that would add up significantly on a project that we're, you know, we're challenged in terms of budget, so...
Well, I understand. I mean, I know that, because that was when I was, the architects from, on the high school, we have those, the grills on the outside of the building, where we bricked them all up, because we were no longer having that there. I understand that we're not gonna have the, well, that does pose a question. If you're, it says abandoned in place, but then intake's blocked off, are you putting, are you taking the grates that we have on the middle schools out and putting masonry? Or are you gonna block it up on the interior, but you'd still have the...
They'd be blocked on the interior.
That's, okay. Again, I would be curious as far as the, I understand, you know, we've got wall services and what have you, and we're really trying to make weight on the budget. Conversely, if we're painting, we're putting new carpet, we're putting new paint, we're freshening the building, and then I've got this air handler leftover from the 70s just in the corner, and it's inert, that's, I'm looking from the optics from a, from a public standpoint, and then from a functionality standpoint, there's square footage that we're, we're unable to utilize.
So we can, you know, we can talk about that as a team, and we can, you know, maybe do some investigation and check and see, and maybe pull one of those units out. The concern I would have is that when the, when the schools were built, they knew that those were, those areas were going to be, they were gonna be hidden, so they probably, they may not obstruct the masonry, you know, they're the floor, you know, there could be, there's gonna be a lot of penetration. So if we remove the units, we could be opening up a can of worms, and, but it's worth, you know, checking, so we can do some investigation and see, you know, report back to you on how significant we think it would be to remove them and patch whatever's left.
Just piggyback on Eric's question, and please forgive the ignorance of the question by, I could hear other people asking. So the notion of having separate thermostats in each room and separate units in each room sounds like an understandable way to go. However, I could also see someone saying, well, wait, if it's the same side of the building, getting the same light, getting the same sort of heating and cooling, why, has there ever been any thought given to sharing units across classrooms, or is that really just not the way to do it? Can you, can you help us to understand why this is the better way to go?
Well, part of that comes into the, you know, the sustainability goals for the project, and we're trying to achieve LEED silver certification. So controllability of space is a component of LEED. And so in terms of achieving LEED credits, but also in terms of optimizing energy efficiency, having more control will make the building more energy efficient. And I understand, you know, common walls, you know, there is, there is definitely merit to your, to your question.
Right.
But in the goals of making this as sustainable and energy efficient as possible, and in following the Ohio School Design Manual.
Right.
You know, individual controls in each classroom is, it's pretty standard nowadays, so...
And I, again, that's a good answer, by the way. Just out of curiosity, I understand part of it being LEED, but is, it has actually been checked that it's that you're using less energy using separate units being controlled separately?
Correct. Because you could have, you could have a classroom that's vacant, kids are at lunch, that unit can close itself down, not put out, you know, the energy that's needed to keep a fully occupied room condition, so...
That's a good answer, thank you.
Okay.
Sure. Other questions, questions about the whole topic for them? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, okay, so I'm really impressed with how you guys have organized this. And, I mean, it's very, very helpful from a decision-making standpoint of seeing what's included, what's not included, the bid alternatives. I am pleased that we're able to tackle so much for the limited budget that we have. I didn't think we'd get this far. But I also recognize the fact that you still have to bid this, so you really, we really don't know what it's gonna be until we're farther down, down the path. I am concerned if we wanted to implement any of the value management items, if we have bid day savings, that we'd be able to do it based on, I mean, I don't see these as listed as like alternates with, if we basically said, you know, turn these into alternates. I mean, I don't know if you're looking for feedback, but, I mean, I mean, if we can keep our total number at the $30 million, and then use the value management numbers as items, as bid alternatives, maybe we get a better sense. I mean, I don't know if it bids, does it bid better if we include it in initially and then take it out?
There's a lot of theories on, you know, how many alternates you want to have, and, you know, we want to have a manageable number that will get the correct amount of attention from the subcontractors. So, you know, we've got a fairly extensive list here, but some of the alternates that were on the drawings are, were requested by the district to be moved to base. So this list of alternates at the bottom is, you know, there's a lot of these, you can see it says base bid, so we can eliminate that. I think that everything in the value management is really a pretty distinct standalone scope, except for the roofing, but, you know, roofing's on the outside of the building. So, you know, everything that's in the VM list, I think it's reasonable to call those alternates. Does that, does that answer your question?
It does. I mean, but you do sort of bring up the big one, which is sort of the roofing issue. I mean, in order to get to the $30 million, if we don't do the roof, when we know that we're gonna be paying for the roof anyways down the line, I mean, does it make sense for us to figure out a way to include that now in the project? And I know this is a decision we, I don't think we have to make right now, but, I mean, I think we need to noodle on the ideas if...
We do.
Jack, go ahead.
Well, I think, I think you might, I think we're trying to get to the point of making the decision.
Absolutely. So again, the goal today, you know, I believe that the goal is $30 million, so we want to walk out of here with which items you've selected to hit the 30.
Well, I'm, piggybacking sort of on Jim's and Ron's, it gives me a pause for a question I'm gonna ask you. I mean, there's a number, there's a few items here in your possible items, which, if we were talking about, you know, alternates or what have you, I mean, they're, I hate to say small, but in the size of this, it's, you know, for example, the, the two media centers, or the gymnasium painting, $16,000 to paint the two gymnasiums. To me, there's a number of these which are relatively small in the context of larger project, which, in my opinion, I'm not sure if it should be, I don't want to add something to the, because you're trying to make weight, but the question would be, is it possible to include them into it, to have it more encompassing than, you're walking down the hall, and suddenly it goes from fresh and new to, you know, 1990s? That would be a thought. The question I would pose more from a big picture is that if, for example, from value management, we're taking the roof scope out, the question I would, in the same, I know we have the window replacement as well. Right now, we're, theoretically, we sign off on this in January. We still have 17, you're gonna go, this will probably go out to bid in the fourth quarter of 17, correct?
We're starting construction in March of 18, so this would be at the end of 17, and I think I have right here, the approved GMPs are, we're approving the GMP at the end, yeah, the end of the year, end of 17.
Look, I guess, where I'm trying, what I'm looking at is, what, for sort of scalability with bid day scalability, if we pull, if we say, hey, to make weight, we agree, we sign off on your, the value management, we're cool with that. Is there any, so that would mean that the roof replacement, or any plan for roof replacement or window replacement, that, our friends from Moody Nolan, they're not gonna do schematics or anything on that? That's, that's a whole separate...
No, no, no. If, well, it depends. You know, the value management, again, we talked about possibly doing that as an alternate.
Okay.
So if you did it as an alternate, they would, they would design it.
Okay, okay.
So if we thought about this list, the value, the alternates that are below would be additions or subtractions from the 33?
Correct.
These are not in there anywhere, so these...
That's correct.
Okay. So we'd be now picking and choosing what we...
Sure. Yeah, the alternates, you know, they're adds, and they're not included in the 33. So if you took every single value management, and I said, you know, the value management is more than what we need, you would have $462,000 worth to play with on the alternates, if that's what you wanted to do.
Well, the question, I guess, my next question would be, we sign off in January, we're good to go. For your, let's say, seri, you know, when it comes to bid day, when, okay, when you're, when you're picking, if you have, if, please, we have bid day savings, when would you need to know in gen, from our, from our staff and from us, I guess, what's, what's the cascading sequence of, what's the priorities on the bid days? When would you need to know before bid day, how we would prefer, you know, what's the priority? How, when would you need to know the prioritization?
After bid day, when would we need to get your approval for the alternates? Is that what you're asking?
No, no. How would we, when would you need to know from us, the sequence to determine bid day savings options? Just, you know, the sort of, if, for example, you open up the bids, and you've got a half million that you're able to allocate, when would you need to know from our folks which ones are the priority ones?
Well, certain, certain items are not really an issue. Painting the corridors, for example. We can buy the paint, you know, three weeks before we need to do it. You know, if you choose to do the window replacement, that's a very long lead, it could take six months to get the windows. So, you know, depending on, we'll get the results, we'll see where we are, we'll see if we have savings and things like that. And if you say, look, we're thinking about the windows, I'll tell you, well, if you are considering the windows, I need an answer in such and such a time. And I don't know that right now, but I'll be, I'll be able to tell you that. If you want to add $8,000 worth of paint, I don't need an answer right away, and we can, you know...
Okay.
Yeah. We actually have three sets of things here, don't we? We've got the summary of scope excluded, should we be thinking about that as we're having this conversation about value management and bid alternates? Is that, is that something we should be thinking about as well?
Well, it's important that you understand what's included, it's important that you understand what's not included as well, and there's some of the items that are excluded are listed down as alternates. So, you know, we tried to give you a real comprehensive, that here's what you have, here's some things that you, you don't have, and then the value management, the alternates, alternates. So, you know, it's, yeah, it's important that you understand what you're not getting, because that may inform your decision as far as one of the alternates.
Yeah, a lot of those are...
So, Jack, let me just be as simple as possible, because that seems to work for me. What you need to know is, do we want to hold to that $30 million budget? And if so, basically, the recommendation from your group is, is everything above the value management line is the way it's written on this, on this form. Everything below, value management and below is, these are things that we could all list as alternates. You don't need to know which alternates we want at this moment in time. You just want to know, can, can you do, if, can, well, the board is, the board willing to say, yep, 30 million, and everything above value management is the way that is? Is that what you're looking for from us tonight? Well, again, we're going with the assumption that 30's a number, so let's hold that for a second. So, yeah, the idea is, we need to know what is included in the job, and if you tell us that we want everything that you've got at the top, and we want to do the alternate, or the value management's alternates, that, that will get us to your $30 million target, okay? So I think that satisfies your request. Now, if you say the number is more than 30, it's 32, or something, that's a whole nother discussion. Right, right. So, I mean, so being, again, being simple about this. If, in fact, 30 million is our number, then basically, if we tell you, okay, the way you've written it, and then make these alternates, that would be all you'd need to know tonight? Is that correct?
Or do you need to know which are the alternates? Do you need to know?
They're trying to get more out of us than that.
We're good. I, I think, I think we've identified a path to 30 million dollars.
Yep.
We've kind of deferred the decision with the alternates and the value management.
Yep.
We've given Moody Nolan clear direction on here's how we, we want you to design it.
Yep.
When we get the bids, assuming the numbers track, you're still going to have a path to 30.
Right. Yeah. Okay, so I mean, so I, I think we need to, yeah. Are we at that point that we can do that? Does anybody have anything? Okay, great. So I, I, we, there's no, there's no motion, there's no voting tonight, so...
Right. There's no voting, no motion tonight.
There's no vote tonight, so I'm going to, we're going to let them proceed. Are you, Jim, you all right?
Oh, yeah, I'm okay. I have a comment after that.
Make your comment.
Okay, so, I mean, I think, I mean, 30 million is the number today and that's what's tracking based on Brad's numbers.
Right.
And it's what's tracking based on Steve Friedman's numbers.
Right, right.
But there's also contingencies from Gilbane that we don't know about. So I think it's important that we do have these altern, alternatives because, you know, six months from now, we'll, we'll have a clearer picture of what those are. I am concerned, though, of keeping the roof scope in, and all, I mean, we have to keep it an alternate right now.
Right.
We may need to look for ways of doing that sooner than later.
Yeah.
And hopefully, I'm asking staff, can you look at alternatives for us?
You want us to look for alternatives and way to, to replace the roofs on the buildings?
And included in this, included in this project, we're going to have to pay for it anyways.
Gotcha.
Well, when, I, what's the, what's the roof replacement schedule for the two middle schools?
Well, that's where...
That's what he wants to...
That's where, and this is, I don't think we need to know this for six months.
Right, right.
But I think we need to have that available to us. The other issue is, the fact has been asking for this kind of information. And, you know, now that we've seen it, I think we need to get it to them so they can digest it. There's, it's going to come up in their joint meeting.
That said, they're going to need a vote from us, the first meeting in January, is that correct?
January 3rd.
Yes. So we, we do need to understand that there are real consequences to not keeping with the timeline at this point. So I, so again, if we're, and, and Jack, please hold me accountable here, if we're giving, not giving you every piece of information you need tonight, you need to tell me what we're not giving you. So what I'm hearing the board say, and anyone can correct me, is that what you have from above the value management line, that, that, yes, we understand that that would keep us within the $30 million budget, that we, at this point, that is the number. Again, anybody just speak up if I'm saying something wrong.
Well, no, no, no.
No, 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 that's the 32.
You don't get the 30 unless you take the value management.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize.
Right.
Yeah. And so the value management is not, we would take the value management, but we would like to keep this in as alternates as well. Yes? Everybody's good?
Yes.
So what I'm hearing is you're releasing us on everything, including value management, which gets us to below your number, and you're asking us to maintain the alternates that we currently have.
Right.
And you're asking us to change the value management to alternates.
Right, is that, and that's within the scope of what you're looking for?
Yes.
Yes, that's what we're, that's exactly what we're saying.
And, and that's, that's what, that's what they will revise and will come in your board packet...
Right.
At the end of this week.
Right.
Right.
So it'll be formalized for the consideration for January 3rd.
Right. And as you also heard Jim say, if, if the staff can look at, if there's anything else that could be by January 3rd regarding the roof.
Well, I may not need, I mean, for the roof stuff, I mean, if it's an alternate, I mean, we'll find out what the number is. I mean, we're going to have some decisions to make...
Right.
Once the bids come in.
Right.
Well, the only thing is that the bids come in, that's not, they're not doing bids till fourth quarter of 2017.
End of the year.
I think the issue is yet, is they go through schematic and design development to see how those numbers really shake out as they move forward to get us a better sense. And I think the other key's going to end up being then sort of the, the decision tree when they start opening bids, okay, what gets, if they, if we, if they've got a half million dollars, what do we want to spend a half million on versus if there's only 100,000? I mean, if 100,000, to be honest, there's a number of small, you got 6,000 here, 5,000 now for paint. In my opinion, do those because that's, they're small little things that have, actually are going to have a, a visitor and utilization impact versus if we can't afford the windows, we know we can't afford windows. It'd be great if we did. Some writes a big check, that's awesome, but that's not going to happen.
Well, I've got one question. The, the site work must have a significant price tag. But is, is, is that the way to think about it? Because I think it's not listed as a possible alter...
We never really considered a whole lot of site work, Ron, so we, we knew we were a budget challenge, so we never really had site work. We had minimal utility upgrades. I think we had a water line at one of the schools, but we never really went down the path of doing site work improvements.
Okay.
Any other comments? We're good? Do you have what you need?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience, too.
You're welcome.
All right, I think that ends the business section. Mr. O'Brien, you could correct me if I'm wrong.
That is it, Mr. Zucker.
All right, thank you, thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thanks for your patience with us as well. Which moves us on to item G, item G finance, and we're going to take at least the first one separate, item G1, financial reports. I need a motion for item G1, financial reports.
You need a motion?
Yes.
So I'm a...
Second.
Okay. Mr. Gaynor, would you like to say...
Absolutely. Okay, so aside from the two monthly cash position reports that we have under the financial reports, we also have an updated five-year forecast, so we want to take a little bit of time here to talk about that. So you will recall that the board did ask that we begin including a, a five-year forecast as a standard monthly financial report, and so that's what we've been doing. For the last few months, there, there haven't really been any material changes to the five-year forecast. And all that changed in November. And we had several things that have occurred that have oddly enough actually kind of offset each other and, and put us at the same bottom line, but some things that we want to talk about. So let me start by, again, reminding everyone, please make sure that you're looking at the financial projections in the upper left-hand corner that say December 2016 final. Because we did have a preliminary forecast that didn't say that, so, no, that would have been in the packet that was... Everybody has that?
Yeah.
Everyone's looking at the right one?
Okay, good, go ahead.
Says December 2016 final in the upper left-hand corner.
Yes.
Constantly evolving documents, so we, this is, this is hot off the press and, and up to date. Again, not, if you look at the, at the fiscal 19, bottom line number of $466,000, not significantly different than, than the one that you were reviewing previously. But we do have a few things that have, have shifted categories, but... So also, your assumptions are updated and actually I've included a little more explanation in the assumptions than what we'd previously done before. Again, in an effort to be completely transparent and make everything easily understood, I've added some additional narrative in the, in the assumptions and even insofar as, as describing what an encumbrance is. And Mr. Wilkinson, we can thank for that, asked, you know, what, what is that item? And actually, that came up in some of our conversations with some of the negotiating teams. What is an encumbrance and how does that play in the five-year forecast? So we've included it here. And I'll get to that. So on the revenue side, we have had a few things that have happened. First of all, with this forecast, for the first time, we have the, the levy passage included. So that was a big thing that happened in November that is new since the last forecast that you approved. So the, the levy proceeds are included in this forecast. Another thing that happened in terms of property taxes, you'll recall, and I just have added some additional narrative here for that, but remember, we talked about at the last meeting, I believe, the Severance Kaiser facility? And I think that, that Jim and Eric, you asked for some additional explanation about that. So I did include a little bit of narrative there, but I also have a, something for you to take a look at at your leisure. I'll, I'll talk just briefly about it. This is from your real estate counsel and, and I asked Bob Brinza, most of you know him, to just lay out a little bit of detail about Kaiser and what's happened there. But the, the main point to, to remember is that the Kaiser facility has asked for tax exemption all the way back to 2009. The, we had a recent ruling in November where the judge said that he was going to give them three years of the tax exemption and that the, the early years were not included. Kaiser appealed that ruling and so now we're party to some litigation here. So all those numbers related to Kaiser becoming tax exempt to the tune of a million dollars a year in, in taxes are included in the forecast and, and have been. But just to, to give you a little more detail about kind of the history of how this scenario has played out and, and some of the specifics.
That property is valued that highly that we would, we, we're supposed to be receiving a million dollars a year from it?
That's correct.
That's just...
They're, they're saying that they should be completely exempt.
That's correct.
Because they're nonprofit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just remind us when this got, when this became and when this was included into the five-year forecast? At what point?
This, this would have been included in the forecast at least back in November, but it may have even been prior to that, that we hit...
But it wouldn't have been included in the forecast when we determined the millage for the levy.
That's correct. Okay. That's correct. This is, this is a subsequent event.
Okay.
Yeah. And Eric, to your point, in Bob's memo towards the last, the last page, you see that the potential annual loss of revenue ranges from 950,000 to just over a million per tax year commencing with tax year 2009.
I'm just trying to figure out what the valuation of that property is because that's got to be, I mean, if our rate's 3, 3.45%, I mean, how much is that property worth then? And that's just, anyway, that's just crazy.
We've already collected the revenues on that. I mean, we've already...
We have. But the problem is that the, now that the judge has ruled, then we are, there are three years that we absolutely, based on the current ruling, will have to refund. And then there are still the other four years that are at risk. And so actually, at the time that the ruling came down, we, we were weighing whether or not we should appeal the fact that, that of the seven years, we lost three. And it was Bob's opinion at that time that we should not appeal because we would risk the other four years. And based on similar situations and other healthcare providers in other communities, his, his experience with this was that, that this was the way this was going to play out. Kaiser went ahead and appealed anyway, so it kind of took that decision out of our hands. They appealed, we've appealed.
Worth 33 million dollars.
So we have to write a...
Yes, it's $30 million property.
Right, so we have to write a $3 million check.
Well, they'll, they'll just deduct the, the taxes.
Yeah, they'll take it out over time.
Right.
But would they do, would they try to take it out all in one year or...
Well, that's what we don't know. And so you'll see, you know, at the end of Bob's memo, the, the, the three-plus million that's still at, at risk, he says the appeals are in the early stages. And we're currently developing a request to have the Board of Tax Appeals designate the appeals as complex litigation. And so we're going to start going through that process and obviously, you know, we're going to vigorously defend that amount of money and the, the status for those years. And if we do not prevail, we would be hopeful that they would not take that money all at once and that we would be able to take it over a period of time. But it is in this forecast in its entirety, both the, the ruling already in 2017 and the future and money at risk.
Okay, so you're taking it out of the forecast?
Correct, absolutely.
Um, I don't know how, I don't know how this could happen. We knew who they were when we, when they started tax, when we were, when they...
It's the same thing with the clinic. And Beechwoods fought this fight with the clinic and, and lost. And, and David Seed was actually their primary counsel for that for, for a long time. And, and even the judge's ruling, you'll see from Bob's memo, it was all a matter of when, when they decided or when the judge decided that they were actually providing community-wide healthcare services versus not. And that was a change in their policy at the break of those three years. You know, his, in this, the commissioner granted the exemption application beginning for 13 due to the creation of a medical financial assistance program. So it was, it's kind of what Kaiser does along the way that the judge took as the point of before the, you know, they provide community services for medical care at one point, but prior to that, they supposedly didn't...
They do that?
They say they do.
So what, well, I guess the question goes to being, and I'm probably on, on thin ice is going down, it's the question I'd pose is, it's like sort of, is their entire, are they entirely a nonprofit agency or are they saying part of the things they do are nonprofit? Because if part of the things they do are nonprofit, then why isn't it just a portion of their program or a portion of their square footage as opposed to the entirety of their facility?
See, I think they are probably not a, a 501(c)(3). What they probably are is a 501(c)(4), which means that they are membership-based. And with membership-based, you don't get the exact same treatment, so you usually end up paying taxes as a c4.
So I think you're right. So, but so let's, we could really get deep into this, but we have legal counsel who has been, who's very well-versed on this, who is attacking these different areas.
And if it's the board's pleasure, we can, we can have Bob come in. And, and actually, he would, he would certainly, as, as this litigation moves forward, he will be addressing the board in, in executive session on the topic. But, you know, we can ask him for as much detail or as little as you want to kind of make sure we're educated. But read the memo, you know, that he's prepared in its entirety. And if we have additional questions, you can direct them to me. I can get them to Bob and we can work from there.
I think, I think the key thing is for us and for the public as a general, I mean, this goes the, this goes against us completely. I mean, this is, I don't want to say huge, but this is very, 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 very bad.
It went badly for Beechwood with the clinic.
Kaiser's in a little bit of financial straits, too, aren't they?
Well, and you'll, you'll see with, from, from what, what Bob has described, there, it's actually gone through, it's not even Kaiser anymore. It went to Healthspan and now it's even been bought by another entity. So it's not even Kaiser anymore. So we're not even sure how, how vigorously Kaiser's going to pursue this as we move forward. So, so, but the point being that, that Bob has given us these numbers for what we know to be the actual loss and what the potential loss is for those out years, and those numbers are included in the forecast.
And if, if things progress, we may yet want to meet with him, but go.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's the detail on that ugly situation.
Now the good news.
Oh, no, there's, well, well, there was one bright spot and, and it kind of comes in when you see, if you look under, again, revenue, we're still talking about, under the disadvantaged pupil aid line, under the state sources, you see a significant jump from 1.6 million in fiscal 16 all the way up to fiscal 17 at four and three-quarter million, almost $5 million. So one of the unintended consequences of the district joining the, the free lunch program that we did was that the state in their formula has decided to classify us as, every student we have is disadvantaged. So we got a significant bump in our disadvantaged aid in the formula. Now, the problem was with that, once we got that, then we came off the guarantee. So you'll remember that we had a $2 million guarantee, so we got more disadvantaged pupil aid, we lost money on the guarantee. So, one, it was all said and done with, with those circumstances and with the additional deductions that I'll talk about in, in a minute here, our, our state aid is stayed pretty much the same. You know, so we had some positives and we had some negatives. One of the other negatives was the, um, uh, the deduction for community schools, charter schools, voucher, scholarship programs increased even more than what we had previously anticipated in the forecast, and in our November number two state foundation payment is when all this stuff occurred. So the state made all these determinations up to our November one payment from the foundation. They had, they operated from estimates. November number two, they redid all the numbers and they gave us actual numbers for all of our deductions, for transfers and adjustments, for, for charter schools, community schools and scholarships. So just to throw out a couple of quick numbers for you. Um, our community school, uh, charter school deduction was two point eight million in fifteen sixteen. That went up to two point nine million in sixteen seventeen, so that was fairly consistent. Only went up about a hundred thousand dollars. Our ed choice numbers, which we expected to increase from one year to the next, in fifteen sixteen, the ed choice scholarship number was one point two million. It went up to two point three million in sixteen seventeen. But the unanticipated increase was in the Peterson Autism Scholarships, which you can't necessarily predict because it just depends on what students you have and what their needs are. Um, in fifteen sixteen, the Peterson Scholarship was just under a million dollars. It went up to one point six million. And the autism scholarship went from five eighty up to seven sixty, almost seven seventy. So overall, all of these choice kind of options, vouchers, went from five point six million in, in fifteen sixteen up to seven point six million in, in sixteen seventeen. So just under two million dollars increase.
So basically, what that translates into is that, uh, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, five point six million dollars that the state would give us because, based upon student population, five, five point six is going to a whole host of non-public entities. And that went from five point six to seven point six, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I know from reading, from looking at those lists again, I mean, the overwhelming majority are non-public entities, and they're not, they're religious schools.
For ed choice?
Right.
Ed choice, yeah.
Correct, but it varies by category, but yes.
And I, I know if memory serves, again, I don't remember, I don't have in front of me, I think an overwhelming majority of those students would, were never, were highly unlikely to be attending the public schools.
I could make that.
Yeah, that's, that's probably true.
So to.
Did you remember the breakdown that he gave us before in terms of where the students were going?
Yeah, I, yeah, the overwhelming, it's basically, there's, it's about five different, uh, Jewish schools and then a couple of, a couple of Catholic schools. And then there's a few other ones. That was the majority of it, yeah.
And once, and now that the numbers are updated and we have some actuals, I can get you an updated list that shows you where, where all.
They update them every month, don't they?
They do update twice a month.
Twice a month.
Yeah, so, um, but it was, it wasn't until the November number two payment when, you know, the district had an opportunity to verify the students and we, we had actual numbers for those. So again, the foundation numbers by category throughout the forecast changed, but overall, the dollars were, ended up ironically being, you know, pretty much where we expected them to be. You'll also note, and, and so the increase in the vouchers is actually down under expenditures, under the line, um, purchase services slash tuition. And I actually added the word vouchers to that so that it's clear that as you see that go from, you know, around eighteen, seventeen million dollars up to nineteen and then increasing from there, that's, that's what you're seeing under that line item. So what they do is actually gross up our revenue and then they deduct it by expense at the bottom half of that.
So it counts as our cost per student?
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
In some of their, in some of their calculations, not all of us, yes, in some.
The, um, the, we're frozen on the ed choice for a minute, right? In terms of the potential of other schools actually being ed choice schools.
Right.
That's correct.
And that's, what is that, a two-year window where we're frozen? But when we get back, when we go back, the clock ticks?
Well, the state, if they make a decision, but.
Okay, so it's not definite in terms of how it's gonna happen? Okay.
But those students who are currently receiving vouchers can continue to receive them until they graduate. So we can anticipate the amount of money that we're giving out for each class to continue until those students graduate from high school.
But, but no, new students can't.
Correct.
Right.
So that amount of money, we still, we will still keep in our forecast.
So it'll be a little bit easier to predict it in the next couple of years than.
Once we're out, absolutely. Yeah, the number would not increase. We would know exactly what it would be.
We would know, so when we talk about the, the forecast, we know that the minimum we would need to budget four million.
Right, I got it.
You got it?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, so Scott, so between this year and last year, we've now have two million dollars less revenue to deal with from the state. So how did you carry that from seventeen to eighteen and then eighteen to nineteen and so forth? Did you just like, is another two million years compounding or how, or you just?
No, once, no, once we, you know, in terms of the, uh, the foundation deduction or the foundation reduction, yeah, it's, it's carried forward from there. So the assumption in the forecast is that we're disadvantaged now, we got more money, we have the, um, we have the, uh, but, so we have an increase there, but we have the decrease because we're off the, off the guarantee. So those numbers are carried forward, but you, where you see the increase is down under the voucher number as we see the, the ed choice numbers continue to climb.
So just one clarification.
I'm sorry.
So the foundation money was actually, I mean, the, um, guarantee was actually in the foundation.
Guarantee was in the foundation.
It would have been at the revenue, on the revenue side.
Correct.
And so we're, we're offset by the expense on the, uh, scholarships on the, on the bottom two.
Correct, so the assumption is that the, the revenue now that we're seeing from the state will remain throughout the life of the forecast at the level that it is for this school year.
But don't we really need to assume that if we were surprised? Okay, so we, we have an additional two, two million dollars worth of expense that's going back out to the state?
Right.
I mean, it's not gonna stay steady. I mean, this sort of attack on our schools is.
For a minute it's gonna, that's the conversation we just had.
Right.
It'll be for a minute it will because there's a freeze on as we speak. There's not gonna be new what.
But a lot of this was like the Peterson money, that's not, I mean, that's with the ed choice.
That could change.
There's, there's, you know, three other components, though, to this, to this number. I mean, we.
That's, that's true.
We, we have to assume that it's going to get worse.
And we have nineteen seven in seventeen to twenty million, five ten in eighteen to twenty-one million, two sixty in nineteen. So that's increasing, yes, it's increasing at a million dollars a year because, Ron, to your question, until we get out of ed choice status, we would expect that every new grade level of kids, particularly in those schools, is gonna be added to the number we're carrying forward.
Okay.
So, sorry, I wasn't clear about that. So yes, there will be, there is another.
Yeah, there'll be some.
Yeah.
And, and we're assuming the Peterson and autism will, will stay where they are now, but they could, they could jump.
But they've jumped up to, the Peterson went up.
Yeah.
About four hundred thousand.
The Peterson did go up to the level that we have here. I have ed choice moving forward, but yeah, the Peterson could increase as well.
Once.
It could decrease, it depends on the student population.
Once a child gets Peterson, they keep it? Do they keep it?
It's similar, yeah, yeah, similar to the ed choice. But I think with the Peterson, they have to, and Jeff's not here, but I think they have to reapply every year for the Peterson and the autism scholarships. But we can check that and get back to you.
Okay, so this is a legal document. I know we gotta submit this to, to the state and there's formatting that you gotta do to get it right and certain projections that you gotta use. I mean, is this, is the increase they're projecting that you're using like a best practice? Is it, is it the same?
No, that's based on what we saw from last year to this year in the ed choice numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree.
And, and, and so that's strictly based on our trend, but, and, and, and we had this discussion internally, too. You know, at what point, is, is there a saturation point? You know, would you see that with, with students who are taking advantage of these? Would you expect that number to slow down, um, particularly outside of those non-public students who are taking advantage of that option? And that, this hasn't, this phenomenon hasn't been going on long enough to really have that data, but we, um, we are assuming a million dollars increase in voucher programs overall in each year moving forward, so in eighteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty-one.
Is there anything that's inhibiting us for, or from you, not us? You've got, we have purchase services, tuition vouchers, tuition and vouchers. Actually, more, is it possible to pull that out as a separate line?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I think, to me, that, I mean, you've got purchase services, it was like, I'm thinking Georgia, Georgia stuff and everything. To me, vouchers and tuition, that's a whole other entity. And I think the more, our ability to say, look, how much money is, we're, we are losing, I, I think that's imperative because, you know, you're, we're talking seven million dollars a year out of a budget, what's our budget?
Hundred.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking seven percent of our budget, gone. For students who are not attending us, whose numbers inclusion, I think, as you mentioned, skews our, our per pupil expenditures. And if it wasn't for these ridiculous programs by the state, those dollars would be benefiting our students who are attending the public schools.
Well, and the expectation is with what's happening at the federal level, we are fearful that this actually is gonna be even worse than, than what it is now. We don't expect to see any relief. But, you know, as Jim said, the, the, the format of the five-year forecast is, is dictated, but for our purposes here and for what you see, I can break that, that number out and we can, you know, put it on what you approve monthly as long as, as the, the totals are, are available for me to submit to the state, so we can do that.
So I was at an event and, you know, having a conversation with actually a private school family and was sort of explaining this sort of phenomenon that, that's actually going on. And they quickly jumped and said, well, it's okay if the state takes away money from you because then you don't have to teach a kid, another child, it's gonna be cheaper for you to run your business. And it's like, well, wait, no, 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 you don't understand the way that this works. The state takes more money away from us per kid than it gives us when these monies go out the door. So that means your local property taxes are subsidizing someone else's education now that wouldn't, well, one, many of these, these, these students wouldn't never be going here anyways. I mean, that's a.
Well, and because I've gotten that argument as well. And, you know, part of the issue is, is if you lose five kids here, five kids there and across buildings and grade levels, that doesn't necessarily translate to the loss of a teacher. You're still operating, you know, the same number of buses and buildings and all those utilities. So, you know, it's a false argument that, that they do use often to say, not understanding that we're losing more money than we're getting and many of the students we never would have educated to begin with.
So is there more you wanna tell us about that?
Um, I, I will mention, Mr. Zucker pointed out, so I'm gonna point out the, um, in fiscal sixteen, the Medicaid receipts, um, you know, that's a big jump there that was in previous forecasts, but it should be noted that it's, it's about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, but you can see in fourteen and fifteen, we didn't get that much money. Those Medicaid reimbursements lag and for whatever reason, the way the approval process worked, they lag significantly over the course of those years. So we have multiple years of receipts in sixteen, where in, in fourteen and fifteen, you see, um, there was very little there. I will also mention, is there anything else on the revenue side that I can explain to you? I think that, you know, interest rates, again, um, not a big part of the budget, but that's held pretty static. It was just all the craziness with the, with the foundation and the ed choice and, and some of the voucher programs that kind of increased.
Do we know that we were gonna lose a, a guarantee when we went to?
No, the whole, the whole, uh, actually making, um, giving us more disadvantaged pupil aid, assuming, you know, it was kinda one of those things where you don't believe it until you see it because, you know, Sharon Roll or her EMS person came forward and she said, I'm hearing that the state is gonna classify every one of our students as disadvantaged now in terms of the funding formula because we're now in this free lunch program. And, uh, and they did, but as soon as they did, that raised our, our revenue high enough that the two million dollar guarantee went away. And, you know, the guarantee for everyone who, who doesn't know what that is, is, it's, for every biennial budget, even if you have declining enrollment, the state says you won't get less money than you got the previous biennial budget. So, you know, as your enrollment declines and how much money you should get versus, for your current enrollment versus the, kinda the benchmark is, is the guarantee.
So that freed them.
But it would have been a positive had it not been for what we were paying out ed choice.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know what I mean? So we would have seen.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have seen a big bump there, which would have been great.
Yeah, we would have seen a big bump in our budget.
Right.
You know, so.
You know, so I'm just sort of reflecting back now at when the LAF, um, Finance Committee calculated the levy ask. I mean, I mean, not that you can't cry over spilled milk, but, I mean, if we would have theoretically asked for a larger, larger levy, and I'm sort of like talking out loud just, cause, cause, you know, some of this information is new, I mean, it wasn't even in our packet until like we just got it now. I mean, I'm not even su, I mean, I mean, it's, it's great that we won, okay? It's really great that we won, but I'm not sure if we would have asked for more money if we would have won. And when you look at this, it's like, well, maybe we should have asked for more money. I mean, when you look at the fact that, I mean, we're, we're losing, you know, two million, I mean, there's, I mean, just, I mean, not even, I mean, not even considering the surprise regarding Kaiser, but, you know, two million from the state. I mean, that's a million, it's about a million, about a million a mil.
Well, what, what essentially, the Kaiser and the guarantee is sixty percent of what we passed in November.
Yeah.
Basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, but as, you know, the, remember that when the LAF Finance Committee determined the millage amount, you know, it was both as, uh, recommended, I guess. It was as a result of the previous levy failure that we had, but also it was with the notion that the amount would last for fiscal seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And if you look at the bottom line on the current forecast, it lasts seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. So all those things that have happened, both positive and negative, still puts us in the same place that that ask was expected to.
And they could only work with the facts.
And they could only work with what they do at the time, so. So they, so, you know, again, it's.
But Jim's, Jim's right, inasmuch as we failed last year, so, uh, you know, that's that balance that we always do with levies. You can only ask for what you can justify, and then once you start going higher, you're right. It's a political gamble, it's a bad political gamble.
Sure.
Then we'd be in a worse situation.
Right, then we would be losing staff.
Okay, so you have some costs for personnel labor built into this?
Yes.
Well, he, he was going, he was just doing.
Yep, I'll get right there. So on the, so that's the whole revenue side. On the expense side, exactly as you were just saying, Jim, the, you know, the bulk of our budget, again, we know is salaries and benefits for staff. We're about kids, or people who are teaching kids. So, um, the salaries that are included in here are the same that have been included in the forecast since before, you know, the, both levy asks. We had a, um, uh, we had a zero for fiscal seventeen, one percent, and then a one percent increase cost of living moving forward. So that's the same in this forecast as was in previous forecasts, and that's what.
Three years, zero, one, one, is what you're saying?
Well, actually, for, for purposes of this forecast, it's zero and then one in, in the four out years. But in terms of if you were negotiating a three-year contract, yes, you would, you would assume that to be a zero, one, one. Um, so we, those are the numbers that are cost of living 'cause you'll remember that we do have staff that move along a salary schedule as well. So those numbers tend to run about one and a half percent of your total salary. So we have one and a half percent in every year, even the year where there's no cost of living increase. We're still gonna see an increase because we have staff stepping along a salary schedule. And, and in terms of the other big item, uh, on the budget is, is the fringe benefits. Here, again, we had another positive that helped out our bottom line in the terms of this forecast, which was for calendar year seventeen, we had a zero, um, insurance renewal, zero percent increase. So, you know, we, we had a previously, and again, this is new data, this just happened at the end of the calendar year, so November, December, previously expected a seven and a half percent increase. You'll see that actually in, um, in sixteen calendar, for, for this current fiscal calendar year, we had a fourteen point nine percent increase. We had seven point five percent expected for calendar seventeen, but we had a decent claims year and we have some pretty aggressive healthcare consultants who we got loose on, um, on Medical Mutual, and they got us a zero percent for fiscal, or for calendar seventeen. And then we have the seven and a half percent for eighteen forward. So again, another positive in, in the grand scheme of the equation here. And, uh, other than that, we already mentioned the other big item is those vouchers that you see increasing that purchase services tuition voucher line by a million dollars a year, which in future forecasts I will break out so you can see that component of purchase services separately from the others. And that is really it, other than to just mention, because this did come up several times and when people ask, you know, what are encumbrances and why are they sitting here on the forecast? And in fact, the, the, the reason the number came up was that our purchase services number, when you look at this forecast compared to last May's forecast, looked lower. And so the question, um, actually came from the teachers' union who said, why, why is this actual two thousand sixteen purchase services number so much lower than what was projected back in May? And the reason for that is that much of the two point seven million dollars that you see in encumbrances is in purchase services. And so an encumbrance is, you, any purchase order that. And so, an encumbrance is, any purchase order that is put out there for any goods and services that we would receive, whether or not we've been invoiced for that or not yet, at the end of the fiscal year, if we have a purchase order in place and we've received goods and services, we're financially obligated to pay that. So, it gets pulled out of the individual line items and lumped in this one encumbrance number here. So, that's why it reduces your cash, that's why, you know, it kind of shows here as a pseudo-expense, it's money that we're obligated to pay for purchase orders for things that we've bought or received. Does that make sense with encumbrances? A lot of people ask that question and I always forget because we deal with it every day that, you know, that people don't necessarily know what that is. But that's the way that works.
So, if we have a contract, that's a five-year contract or a three-year contract for copiers or whatever it is, does that all get lumped in?
Generally, no, because each, well, we would have to certify that funds are available for a multiple-year contract. And that's a certification that would be done by me, but the only thing you would see in the encumbrance would be that year's.
The years.
Okay, that's good to know.
Other questions, anyone? Thank you, Mr. Gainer. Maybe I'll take a minute to sort of do a summary the way I heard it and you can sort of knock me off my path. By the way, thanks for all the great news. So, first of all, because we haven't had a chance, because this is the first meeting since we passed the levy, to everyone, for everyone who worked on the levy, everyone who voted for the levy, everyone, and I want to say it this way, to all of our community members who chose to be part of the solution, because that's what you did by voting for the levy, thank you. That's from all of us, I mean, I'm the one speaking, but that's from all of us. We really appreciate it. We appreciate the trust you've put in us, the volunteers, all the hard work you put into it, all the thought you put into, you know, part of it is having a good message, but you have to have people who know how to get that message across. And we had tremendous number of foot soldiers and we can't thank all of you enough. Also, this is a good time to take a moment to thank our staff. You know, our staff does tremendous work. We value our staff greatly and we want to thank them and recognize them publicly for all the great work that they do for us on a daily basis. You know, you dedicate your professional career to us, you dedicate your time, you dedicate time away from your family. Those of you who are watching us speak a long time tonight, thank you so much for sitting patiently in the audience, but also all of our staff, we really appreciate it. And thank you for your commitment to the five-year strategic plan, which is a lot of what encompasses the work that you do. We heard from Mr. Gainer and the questions from the board on the updated five-year forecast. The forecast took into account the issue 109, which is the operating levy. It takes into account, as Mr. Gainer told us, the money, the revenue that comes from that. But he also brought up a number of things that we didn't really know about, some unusual expenses that we were not expecting. Also, it takes into account what the assumptions have been, as you said, for quite a while now, which is the notion of all of our staff taking a one-year salary freeze and then 1% after that, zero, one, one. So, obviously, and Jim sort of alluded to this when he started talking a little bit about, you know, what we, you know, in terms of picking a levy, an amount for future levies, it's also our goal to stretch the levies as long as possible. The assumptions that were built into this forecast are that it would stretch three years till 2019, right? So, it would stretch through the 2018, '19 academic year, would that be another way to say it? So, that is the assumption built into what we were talking tonight. And as all of you heard, we have some challenges now. And some of them are unknown, but the focus we have in front of us is what we know the best of our knowledge. I think you also will remember what we've done so far. We are currently in negotiations with the teachers and security managers. Our other unions had agreed to a one-year rollover and no cost of living increase for the 2016, '17 fiscal year. And you'll remember that we actually acted upon that earlier this year, I don't remember the exact month, but we reacted upon that. It's our desire as a district to enter into long-term contracts with all of the unions. So, we're going to be working toward that goal. So, again, we thank you for your support, we thank you for your understanding, and we hope this helps you understand a little better some of the challenges that the district faces. So, with that, I think unless anyone has any last comment, we can call for the vote.
Well, I have a question. I mean, you know, maybe this is, this is new business, but, I mean, can you, can someone share exactly through where our staff sort of fits with other local districts as far as, you know, pay? I mean, I think we treat our staff pretty good, don't we? You know, pay-wise?
Yeah, they're okay.
I guess we could ask the administration to maybe bring that information back to us at some point.
That's a better way to go.
Yeah, I mean, because, yeah, I mean, thank you. Yeah, that's a...
So, let's do it that way instead. And so, with that, Mr. Gainer, if you'll...
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
We...
There's a long time ago we did the motion, but we did the motion.
I thought we were adjourning almost. Yes, yes.
All right.
Wishful, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, do, can I take items G2 through 4?
Take two, three, four, yes.
All right, so I need a motion for items G2 through 4.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any comments, Mr. Gainer?
Tax rate resolution, so now that we passed the levy, the county wants us to certify new tax rates, so that's what number two is. Standard stale data checks and number three. And number four is the auxiliary funds, you know, we are a pass-through agency for monies that go to the non-public schools, so that's what we have.
What are those, like textbook funds or something like that?
Yeah, there are certain restrictions in terms of what they're allowed to buy with that. And Supar D manages the auxiliary schools, so she'll meet with them periodically, she monitors their budget, she lets them know how much they have and what they're allowed to spend and as long as they don't spend it for religious purposes. There's mostly textbooks and instructional materials, sometimes consulting.
And that's built into the, that's built into our budget at the state level?
State level, yes. So, nowhere will you see that in any of our general fund stuff. It's in a separate fund, 401, and it comes in, it comes out, and what they don't spend goes back to the state.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, Mr. Gainer, the roll, please.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes, that was not adjouring, Mr. Silverman. So, now, let's, I need a motion for item G5, the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Gainer or Mr.?
I'll punt this one to Mr. Register.
All right. I have actually been in touch with the leadership for the coalition and actually a week ago, we had the executive director, Bill Phyllis, in our community and talking about basically some of the issues related to state funding. And of course, this organization was involved in the DeRoth decision dating back, what is it, 20 years now? More than 20, isn't it? It's probably, yeah, but 30 years, yeah, I think it was 80. It was probably, when they first brought it up, it was probably in the late 80s, like '87 or something like that. But anyway, they fought the battle and, of course, won, but that didn't change anything. And so, there's been this organization, the Ohio Coalition has actually continued to fight the battles around the responsibility of the state in providing for, as the Constitution says, a thorough and efficient education. And so, they have worked with us and they actually recognize us for passing the resolution that we passed to invoice the state. We got a certificate for that back in October in Dublin, Ohio. And we have not been a member of this organization. It's kind of like a council of government or what have you, a council of school boards. And this resolution would encourage us to, would enable us to join them. And the cost for joining them is like, I think, 50 cents per student, which is basically probably, what, $300, $400, I think. I don't know what the exact numbers are. But I think from the value and our being willing to say that it's important that we, that the state does what it should do and lives up to its responsibility, I think it's a good idea for us to join in with others who are like-minded, other school boards that are like-minded. And I think the opportunity is that the voices that we have here in terms of submitting invoices and other things that we might do get stronger as a result of us participating in this organization.
Any questions, anyone?
No, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I sat into that meeting, I mean, I mean, just learning, and I'm a newbie when it comes to school finance, but just trying to, you know, get a sense of how we as an organization need to organize. I mean, this is all big business when you try to privatize education, which is essentially what's going on in the state of Ohio. And big business is funneling millions and millions of dollars to get laws changed through congresspeople, and they're organized. We've got to get organized in order to combat this problem. And I think this is a great step and I really commend you for, you know, taking the lead on it. It's wonderful.
Well, thank you.
That's one.
Okay, maybe. Mr. Gainer, the roll.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you again, Mr. Register, for that. All right, we're going to move on to the board president's report. First, a couple of things before I actually get into my actual report, a couple of things that I guess fall under announcements, but I'm going to make them at this point. I am honored to be sitting next to the cover person of the Phenomenal Woman magazine, the a very, a phenomenal woman and phenomenal person. Dr. Dixon is on the cover of this month's Phenomenal Woman magazine. The article deals with the equity policy and is that correct?
Yeah, the work we were doing.
So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your representation of the district in that way. And I'm honored to be sitting three seats down from the most recent OSBA executive board member, Mr. Register, who is, you're in the regional executive committee member and you're also on the legislative platform committee, am I correct about that?
Well, that's correct.
All right, well, congratulations and thank you very much. And thank you for, thank you for your representation of our district.
We'll see how it goes.
I will give a very quick facilities accountability committee update in terms of you, those of you, some of you may remember that we had talked about by the end of this year deciding what the next step was for the facilities accountability committee. We will be, we are scheduling a meeting with the facilities accountability committee for January to discuss them giving us a report on what they've seen. And the board will discuss with the FAC what the next steps are. So, that will happen, I believe, January 26th, but please watch to make sure that, you know, that is not cast in stone yet, but that's the tentative date. All right, so, this is the final, final meeting of the year, so I'm not going to shock anyone that I'm going to indulge myself a bit and do a quick president's report. No one's going to be surprised at my topic, no one's going to be surprised at the way I present it. But I will tell you that as I was doing it, I was thinking of one of my favorite Thomas Jefferson quotes, which is "He who knows best knows how little he knows." And on those grounds, I'm a star. So, let's move on from there. So, this is the time of year that many people choose for reflection, and while I could probably make the case that people should be reflecting every single day, let's just go with the time of year. So, again, I sort of looked for some quotes that sort of helped me to get through this. And Frederick Douglass said, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men and women." So, let's start, as we talk tonight, about the, about what it is we do, what it is our basic purpose is. We are here to provide tools and opportunities to maximize success for our students. That's what we do. We do, you see all these other things we talk about, but that's really what we do. The students are our customers. And you'll, pardon me, but I come from the business world, so I want to think of them as customers. So, let me just reflect a bit on a few highlights from the previous year. So, as we talked about tonight, we passed the operating levy. That's huge. That helps to secure the needed resources we have to service our students. We built a significant part of the New Heights High School. That creates the environment we need to, again, service our students, to provide what they need in terms of tools and environment. We are, we implemented the strategic plan, that is an ongoing thing that we're doing, but that adds needed structure to the students' lives in terms of what it is we're trying to do, how we're trying to give them the tools they need. We instituted equity policy, as we heard from, as we know from the Phenomenal Woman of the Year, or at least of the Month. And that, again, addresses the needs of our students in a customer-centric approach. So, if you think of what equity means versus what equality means, equality might mean that if you had three schools and you have, you would give each school 100 pencils, sorry, I'm old, I'm going with pencils here, 100 pencils. What equity means is you look for outcomes. What are the outcomes? You want the outcomes to be equal. No matter what the populations are in the individual schools, you give them the resources you need, you provide the resources they need, you provide the professional development those people, the teachers need in order to come up with equal outcomes. So, it's, again, it's customer-centric. What do the students need? And we, as we just talked a minute ago about as well, we invoice the state and that positions us for the future by drawing a line in the sand, that we will stay committed to our students, we will stay committed to getting them the resources they need. So, again, I guess I'm quote-heavy tonight, but Ralph Waldo Emerson said that "The secret in education lies in respecting the student." And that's really what we need to be about, is respecting the student. So, I'm going to tell a very quick story and I'm talking quickly because it's late. But when I was the president of PTA at Noble Elementary School, there was a young third grader who somehow never really knew exactly who I was, but just saw me around the building a lot. So, I was walking on the third grade hall once and I'm hearing this, "Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson." And I'm thinking, I don't see anyone else in the hall, I think he's talking to me. So, I turned around and I said, "Hi." And he said, "Mr. Wilson." I said, "I'm not Mr. Wilson, I'm Mr. Zucker. So, now, let me just help you a minute." Mr. Wilson was the custodian at Noble at the time. Mr. Wilson was at least 15 to 18 years older than I was. He walked with a limp, he had very dark skin, he had very close-cut hair, he had a mustache. I had a full head of red hair at the time and a beard. So, I said to the young man, "You know, not many people confuse Mr. Wilson and me, how, you know, how did you think I was Mr. Wilson?" And he said, "Oh, I always confuse you two because you two both work so hard." So, out of the mouths of babes, what a wonderful way to characterize two people. Now, on a side note, he also said the other person that I reminded him was Jesus. I'm Jewish, I did a little carpentry, but I, other than that, the, although physically the resembles that closely. But again, let's remember that students, the greatest source for learning is our students. They learn from all of us, but just as importantly, we can learn from all of them. So, as we enter 2017, let's remember to all stay customer-focused. And when I say all, I mean all of us, I mean all of our staff, I mean all of our community, and I'm speaking to the community too. Our customers, our community, the customer is the student. We need to be focused on the student. And let's remember what our customers bring to us. Let's have the guts to walk in their shoes. Let's have the fortitude to see through their eyes. Let's have the courage to feel with their hearts. And we frequently point to public education as being the pillar of democracy, but I want to dial that up a notch. And I'm going to do it with my final quote. So, in a year when many of us believe that we should have honored a woman with the United States presidency, I want to, my last quote I want to take from Nancy Astor, and I don't know how many of you know who Nancy Astor was, but Nancy Astor, I believe, was the first member, first female member of the British Parliament, the night, early 1920s, I want to say, is when she started. But Nancy Astor said, "Real education should educate us out of self into something far finer, into a selflessness which links us with all humanity." So, whatever differences we may have, wherever we may disagree, let's put all those aside and focus on what really matters. Let's focus on our customers, let's focus on our students. So, that's my final report of 2016. All right, so, let's go on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, do we have any new business? Okay, any board committee reports, anyone?
I will have no reports tonight because none of my committees have anything to report and it's 9:30 and I want to go home.
All right. Anything, anybody? No? I already did my FAC thing.
My, it might be a committee report, I don't know. It's correspondence, maybe. So, let's just go to correspondence.
Okay, so, let's move on to correspondence.
Okay.
And announcements.
Some of you know that I'm the legislative liaison for us. And I'm not sure if you guys get those legislative updates, but anyway, we got one today. I got one today and I don't know if everybody... don't know if everybody else got it. But what it was is that there was a, the VW mitigation fund was created, and the state of Ohio is going to get $71 million from that fund over the next 10 years, or is slated to get that. I don't know exactly how that's going to play out. But one of the things that the OSBA sent to us is to let us know that that conversation is taking place right now, and it would be in our interest to weigh in. One of the ways that we can use that mitigation fund is to purchase school buses. So, Mr. President, I think it would be good for us to make a statement to that effect that we think those funds ought to be used to purchase school buses. The thing that I will also tell you is that they prioritize the county, the counties and the state. And what you will notice if you happen to go to their website, and they have a website on all of this, they've got, they are centered around the big three cities, Cleveland, Cincinnati, and Columbus, with the idea that if they've got, if we are doing, if we're doing our act in cleaning up the environment and buying good buses and all that kind of stuff, it would be helpful. Also, I'll just let you know that there's been a fund to help with getting clean, you know, retrofitting buses and stuff like that all along. I don't think we've ever applied for any of that. And what it looked like, I looked at it, who was, who had received them, they've been doing it for, since 2006. Cleveland gets it, Columbus gets it, you know, it looks like the big folk get it. And maybe that's because they're the only ones that knew about it. But then, there, there are funds to really look at, looking at replacing or retrofitting or improving emissions with our buses. But I think, Mr. President, that we ought to go on record as saying that we support the idea that these funds should be used for school buses.
I would agree with that. Does anyone have any, either dissenting vote or anything they want to add to that? Now, we wouldn't vote on that necessarily.
No, I'll just write something, send something in if everybody's with me on it.
Everyone, okay? Right, no, that's, thanks, Mr. Register, for bringing that to us. So I think you have the board's support on that, from what I can.
Okay, I'll do it.
All right, anything else? All right, and I apologize to my fellow board members. We need about a short executive session, so I need a, a motion pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1. I need a motion for the board to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official of the school district.
Second.
Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Have a good, have a happy holiday and a happy new year.